Would like to start a meeting, call me in the door. If we could please stand, would like to witness.
All that, here, present, here, covered, your shells.
Present.
Flap.
Here.
Semi-pearl.
Here.
You.
Here.
Really.
Thank you, President.
Heating, air, bell.
Oh, yeah. There. Okay, I have seen tonight's and Google Meeting Minutes from our City Council meeting of August fourteenth. Someone would like to move the minutes.
I'm looking for the minutes.
Move by rhythm, thank you, Danny. Second, second by thought, yeah. Danny, any comments?
I had a couple, uh, if people are able to look at the supplements. In the page five of the packet. It's the minutes for our unfinishedness and consideration of the effectiveness of zoning ordinance for soft storage facility. I'm shocked to Michelle because I had a couple of discrepancies between my notes and what appear more minutes, so let me see where I can find that, that's in the packet. The first, like, the third page, we go to number five. So the first, um. The fourth bullet in the minutes, they tried to even amend it. That section should be amended to read should not instead of should, except the language there actually would shall instead of should. So we felt noted that the word was changed to read shall not, so the minute should be modified, so. The should in that, one through three, fourth bullet, should be shall in both of those cases.
Correct.
And. Okay, I think the last bullets on the top of page six, I think that probably. This correct edge is the cell to know is that the ordinance was changed to the city's engineering standard of specification. So, I mean, it's not exact, so we, as the second left line of that bullet, it says. It should be city's engineer standard, and the cell, I think appropriately changed it to city's engineering standard and specification.
Yeah.
And then I had an additional note that did not appear here, it's, um. It was in the section, um. Okay, so in the last bullet, page five, where we added the hyphens to side to side and front to rear, that section also. Says they may be twenty-five feet apart, side to side or front to rear, or larger, or, uh, it did not read that, it says maybe twenty-five feet apart, side to side or front to rear. Or as required by fire code, so was the suggestion to add or larger. Uh, so I just had that in my notes, and Michelle has indicated in the packet. Thought, or decided, or determined that fire code was maybe redundant today or larger, so I just wanted to draw that. To cancel the tension in case there was somebody else who thought wrongly that we needed to back add or larger, as I think was suggested meeting. Anybody have comment on that, whether or not we actually need to add the larger, or are we okay with that?
So the fire code, in some cases, will say buildings can only be, all they have to be six feet apart. The fire code would, the way it was originally written, twenty-five feet, twenty feet, or fire code. That, by, by me, reads you could have this close at six feet when fire code allows it. Whereas if you have twenty feet or this feet, or larger is required by fire code, that means there are cases where fire code says you can do thirty-three or forty feet, but that will apply above ours.
I'd like to add the or larger, I don't know who's actually to the voter, I'd say to include that, just part of my motion for.
Yep.
Uh, so I, as part of this motion to, or running members, I guess, would be to add that or larger.
Okay.
Uh, and then. The only other thing I noticed on the top of page seven.
On the minutes?
Yes.
Yep.
Uh, for direction for permanent public safety facilities, can you visit a different patient, et cetera, and it said the four presented models include, and there's a poll, and then it doesn't detail what those models were, so I don't know if we intended. Should that include the presented models where, or if we did not.
So I, I think the intent was to, um, would we take that out and maybe have an ocean there.
So it'll make gassing through and include.
Correct.
Got it, considering that we don't, as number for that part, okay, so I would remind, removing that part as part of my, uh, amendments. That's all I can.
Okay, um, a little, something might quickly leave him. Okay, uh, the idea of the council, no, other novel ones, Zach?
Uh, page six, under N one, uh, I believe there's a term, and then accepted to replace the arbor biting, which is what we're gonna do.
I didn't think of what was A, it was expected and. And it was a, it was a suggestion, but if that's what council wants, I'm not just moving on, sorry. If they're in for.
I thought we sort of said we did something, we, we both didn't care about nothing. And for everybody, as you recall, being around.
I do, I do, uh. The object. Other council, council, count, now it's on the minutes. Think there was this call, look, just move the minutes with those changes.
Present? Yes. Flap?
Yeah.
All that? Covered? Yes. Semi-pearl?
Yes.
The shells?
Yes.
You.
Yes. Thank you, motion carries. We have no prearranged participation this evening, so we're down in that arrangement for this statement. If there are any on the audience who would like to speak this evening, I see one person raising their hand online. So I can take the online comments first, Mr. Spencer. You could unmute them, Derek, please.
Thank you for providing me with the opportunity to speak with you. I continue to be confused by your actions with respect to the common sale proposal for thirty forty-five broad. It, it appears that you will bend to any proposal requested by the developer without consideration of the taxpayers. The DDA recently approved funds to study the financial performance of the project, while the capitalization of the project is in need, in need of a gap. The certainty of which is unknown at this time, why are you spending money when the capitalization is unknown and even the total financing is unknown? Similarly, you have been asked by the developer to extend the agreement without any compensation for that change. Again, why aren't you asking for consideration from the developer for the change they are requesting? It seems to me those would be in the interest of the taxpayer, thank you.
Thank you, Jerry, and officially, you're in one fifty-one Jefferson, right?
Yep.
Is there anyone else online who would like to speak? Josh, I want you to say that again. Okay, we'll go to the audience. Yes, please. Mr. Carter, how are you?
Good.
Welcome.
Slow, slow thumbs up.
Do you say your name and address if you wouldn't personally?
Jim McCarter, thirty-five eighty Hudson Street.
Thank you.
Welcome. Thanks for letting me speak, I, I obviously have no prepared statements tonight. I looked at the agenda tonight, and I saw that once again, the charter amendment is on there in a different form now, it's not council initiated, it's rather in response to the MCL requirements for a citizen petition. And it looks to me like, I'm, I'm not sure what, what's gonna happen on that tonight, I don't think it's coming up for vote, it might be. And because this is rearranged prior to item agenda, I got kind of anticipated what's going on a little bit, so a bit surprised. See that on the agenda, given what happened the last time I was here, when we voted for two against the council initiative. So perhaps stating the obvious. If you're doing a pro forma vote based on the procedures in MCL for citizen initiated participation on, under the. Under the council's rules, you probably haven't just understood this thing as pro formal, I'm not sure about that. Um, if that's the case, stating the obvious, it sets up a pretty bizarre situation. That this is gonna be in ballot in November twenty twenty-four, when. Hopefully, we're already well, plus a year into the process of getting a fire station. So, I don't, I don't really wanna imagine where that's headed. The second thing I noted, and again, this is, I don't have experience, I'm not gonna state this directly. I believe that in the MCL, there's a requirement, there's a statement not to exceed a hundred words, that is an impartial summary of the proposed ballot, the, the ballot proposal. The purpose of which is to make sure the public is twisted. And I am trying to reconcile that with the well-known and. Stated, I believe, by people in this room, the purpose for this is to make sure the fire station doesn't end up on each. There is nothing in the ballot amendment that addresses that point, and I'm not sure if just turning it into a question. Satisfies the requirement that it's impartial and doesn't mislead the voters. Just a thought. Um, so if you remember standing tonight, we're headed for two things that I find a little bit weird. And the result of which, I think, will be, we're gonna be in a propaganda campaign come next November, now, we've kind of gotten used to propaganda campaigns in our politics. But here in this, but this is, to me, a complete waste of time. I, I feel this, I feel that there's a group of people out here, and I'm one of them, that's been disenfranchised. We voted last election, we elected the mayor, we have some new council people. You've voted on this already in terms of the fire station, you've voted on this already in terms of the law, the language, the charter amendment. And yet, here we go again. So. I don't know where I land, because I'm not sure where you're headed yet, until when, I guess I gotta stick around through here to figure out what's gonna happen here. And then maybe use participation at the very end, oh god, that's a long topic to go through for that, you guys, and I'm making it water right now, so I get to the point. These so-called citizens for the preservation of all things beautiful in the park over there. I'm calling on you guys to, just pull it, man, just pull it back. Let's just get on with representative democracy here. Think it's high time, certainly for me, after thirty years in this community, I think I've heard about this issue upwards and down. And last thing, I note that last time around, I did not ever say where I prefer personally. Where I prefer fire station, and so getting excited, I never said that, one way or the other, why? Because this council is a representative democracy, we elect you, I elect you, others elect you to make these decisions. And not go through charter amendment process for certain, so in my view, done, let's make it done, and you go on. Thanks for your time.
Thank you for coming this evening.
Yep.
Appreciate the comments.
I'll stick with it while.
Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak? Pretty good. Okay, thank you, everyone, participated, we're down to item health, which is Declaration of Conference of Interest, anybody having a conference of interest with the governor? Would they handle it there?
The much outlaws has been widely, been circulated and discussed, because tables, I have participated. And contributed to the local ballot question committee, uh, friends of Lowry Park. Uh, unless our attorney has any other guidance, though, it was determined that contributing to a vote of activity governed by the state of Michigan, it's not a, um. Conflict, but one there.
Good, thank you. Thank you, I'm doing rule and agenda. And I'm V. Grandpa.
Uh, I mean, we approve the general with the postponement of item M three. The consideration of the charter amendment, you know, language to the first council meeting in December. For the rest of, in that.
Looking myself, Harold, second by Howard, thank you, Lord. Four, ten, three. To the first meeting at the time?
Yep.
Hey, it's back on. And the one.
Okay, paraphrase the question, um, I'm assuming in December, if any language changes is required from the law, cannot count here, we still plan to make any, um, changes if it's postponed in December.
Uh, the intent is to submit, well, if. With the understanding that, uh, as of right now, the staff's understanding that it will be submitted for the November twenty twenty.
Yeah. Right, thank you.
See the further discussion, please call both approve the agenda, we'll both want to compare them three.
Semi-pearl?
Yes.
All that? Yes. Covered? Yeah. Present? No. Michelle's?
No.
Flap?
Yeah.
You.
Yeah. Motion carries? Thank you, we have no public hearings this evening. Um, we have one communication in the packet, our current meeting list, everything down there, anybody have comments on the meeting panel or updates?
Yeah, okay, excuse me, I'm gonna see it there.
Okay.
Thank the planning mission meetings are not ever listed there, so the one on the fifth has been canceled, and it's about to be moved to twenty.
The, 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 the one, the, the, the sky. But I have the one that got it, yeah.
So we don't have a process, or we don't have a, um, I guess precedent for adding some meetings to a meeting now?
Hey, do we go on that?
Got it, because of the timeline, okay, thank you.
Zach? Uh, just out of curiosity, we appear to have a couple of subcommittees, our Culture and Heritage has the Vicentennial Subcommittee. Uh, might be good to document thirty meter dates, and the thirty forty-five Broad Street Committee has itself now its own committee that we could document those on here as well.
That Subcommittee is actually a DDA Subcommittee, I have a second. But, I don't mind incidentally, well, was it the thirty forty-five, what, committee of vote? Was just the DDA, okay, yeah, you did right. Same time. They have comments on the meeting? Tell me. Okay, your reports, our first report tonight is from our Public Services Superintendent, welcome, Tim.
Evening, everyone, I'm the red light.
Yes. Good, how are you doing?
Good, real good, I do, um, so, yes, report by his, giving questions and answering them.
Danny?
I just wanted to follow up on the water on Dan.
Yeah, it's been a, we brought it to engineers about, it's gonna be a part of the bunch of us.
Okay.
So I did go over there the next, very next day, like I said.
Yeah.
So.
What's it gonna be doing in that situation? Read it, what are we doing in that situation? Fill it in, the day.
No, I, I'm gonna talk, it's my topic, Chris, it's something that they probably thought those are reheat it, and they're bringing more asphalt in, spraying the road, so it gets pushed further down, hopefully gets over, where it's at right now, so.
Uh, and then in the past, I think I've asked a couple of times about getting the speed detector in Ann Arbor Street around Dover, and you've been away.
It's in here in work.
Uh, and so just the only thought I can have, I reached out to where that was interested in it, and I have not heard back yet, um. Was school starting next week? Uh, look, I think what I would like to see happen, uh, I understand that they might collect data whether or not, uh. The driver is notified of their speed, right, it's possible, I think we did that, like, we were looking at the speed on that here in Arbor Road, so you can have device tracking data, but it's not flashing its speed to the driver. I think it would be most informative to have that device there without it flashing the speed for a couple of days, and then turn the flash on. Because, you know, just, you're gonna have an effect of, I mean, you're gonna have an effect, ideally, if these things change behavior at all. If we're only collecting data when it's actually informing the driver, I don't think it's as pure of a measure of how fast people are actually going, and I guess even having a device there that's not flashing the speed, people still may recognize it and change their behavior, I'm. I just think it would be most informative if for some period of time, it's not flashing, I don't know, whether that involved, and is that something that we can do over a period of time where we expect traffic patterns to be consistent? So I just did want it to go up like this week before school, and then have next week with school, and then we're gonna be just different things, uh.
So when I talked, when I talked to, uh, Kurt, uh, actually I talked to him about a couple of different things, it's a very whole point. It was a little different, so, um, I was gonna talk to him again about this week sometime, maybe get it out next week.
Yeah.
So you're asking basically to see if it's possibility to get maybe the first week or two where it's not flashing its speed sign, or its speed.
Right.
It's just as, you know.
It's plenty of data in that.
Oh, yeah, which we can.
And I don't know how long it takes to, we have them up, it isn't the location, so if it's over the span of a week, you can only do it, then it's split the week half and half, or the span of two weeks, do one week where it's off, and one week where it's on, or a month, I guess you can do half a month, and half a month, I don't know what your timeframe usually is, but.
The one over here in San Jose has been up for, it's been a good month or so, so it's, uh, it, it, it deters people, I know that much, because when I go to pull out right there, you can see people slowing down right away, so.
Yeah, we usually leave it up in a specific location for a couple of weeks, you know.
So, yeah, I mean, if we think it's effective, maybe it's about you just collect the data for one week, and then you have it on for the other three weeks, um. However, you want to, you know, to be better, so.
Good.
Thank you.
Tim, how did we survive the, the large rain last week?
Well, we did good, we actually had a huge alarm. A bunch of alarms go off actually before the storm, and the tower went out and everything, um, we came in, took care of what we had to do, to get everything running, and everything's good, and then. Obviously, the storm said, uh, did it again, there was, um, the light downtown Baker, Baker in Maine was down until, I think, around eight o'clock Sunday evening. Besides that, it wasn't, it was surprising me, a lot better than, seems like most area.
So we set up generators, and some, much of them been set up, it's been, hey.
Yeah, so they got the generator up, the, the, well, we didn't know about one of Baker, Maine, so by morning, one was actually off, I didn't find out until there was driving around looking at stuff, so. But the one time I got up there, they were up there putting generator up there, and that was the only one that needed it, everything else is, uh, pretty much powered with them, they, they had projects.
I mean, there's, there's some brush around there, maybe take care of that, someone's by yourself that had a couple decent sized trees go down.
So.
Which water plant and water system, well, it did?
Say no, but, yeah, it was, it was just the power, which is, you know, we got some, uh, I got, uh, a generator company, it's gonna come in, it's gonna go up to all our stations, we're gonna have, uh, all our transfer switches. Three stuff cleaned out, uh, we have a couple that have a tendency to not want to trip immediately, like they shouldn't, so we're gonna get that taken care of. And then we, I'm actually looking into getting the price to have. That same generator company come out and walk through every load station, anything that needs, uh, we can hook up our, our personal generator we have there, um, so I'm gonna bring the crew out, everybody will know how to do. So.
Well, thank the guys for working over, as I came home Thursday, played from the airport, showing, training lanes out there, letting a generator up there, then I'll be on the.
Yeah.
So, appreciate all that, it's been gone. Zach?
Uh, to clarify, we'll be fixing up the bird bath, um, Dan, will you also include the entrance on Lexington to Chelsea Bank?
We're looking at it, yes.
Okay, that was a big bird call, um. Let's see, I, I'm curiosity, when the crosswalk was down, had there been any discussion with the contractor about going to one lane or doing a plate over a wall of curried?
No. The best way to do that, especially in that, those type of areas, because the high traffic area is just to shut it down, be done with it, and then within seven days, it's also the contractor, because it's a warranty. Most of the time, safe seven days, just like I did out here, this one took a couple extra days.
Thank you. Yeah? Did we have any water in the E Q basin?
Um, not, not anything at all.
You know, I'm paying on the train, we got.
I can see they said about an inch and a half, or two, so.
Wasn't as much as that, other communities got a lot.
Okay.
Thank you. That, that, maybe? Okay.
So we got a couple things, obviously, your research open, there's a top loss, speed side, we have DTE in here in Rochester, was it?
Everything.
And what, relief, donating around thirty trees to the city, um, we're gonna need volunteers to do it, looking at October fourteenth, I think it was, Saturday, um. We looked at a couple different areas, the best areas to do it, we can get involved on at one time is West Ridge, because the Bradford areas are wasted, so we take some down, and then replace it with, so anybody who wants to volunteer, get over the race.
Who are?
Yeah.
The volunteers, uh?
Yeah, yes, I'm sorry.
When would you go on?
October fourteenth. Saturday.
Yeah, go ahead, sorry.
Um. So is the plan to remove trees and then plant the Bradford pair, and plant the tree where they were, so, or about, say, okay.
Well, what we have right now is, we're gonna go and do, I think there's around twenty or so that we have that been done, or need to be stowed around and stuff, or they'll be ready to go pretty fairly quickly, but there are cluster, perhaps, there's gonna be taken down. Instead of adding, like, for instance, there's, might be three in a small area, we'll refer that to, to several trees.
I, I just know, I know at least three, uh, on Bold Court on East Ridge, there was one that split last week, um. That, but the two on Bold Court, they were, did the city do that, or we did, okay?
Yeah, they went through, and a few of them that were, uh, you know, obviously done looking well, or had rolled from before, and, and heard those guys went over the job, but.
Yeah, so those two broke in a winter show, and, so, yeah. All right, thank you, I just didn't know.
No, this is a good, I think it's a real good thing, anytime you get, I mean, dirty trees, that's, that's crazy, true, so really happy about that.
Yes.
Zach?
I, I would offer as part of the replanting that, um, we ought to check with the, the land and titlement for that project, um, there may be language in it that says there need to be these many trees. Um, I'm not sure the approval process for it, I don't think it was a purity, um, but there may be language on the bill, approved, classified, many trees, which will be there.
So?
Uh, when West Ridge was going in, the builder did say they were gonna change a tree in each house. I don't know if that was a requirement, I know, like, at my house, I called sack, there's a room for two trees, we all, and. Uh, but I don't know, I think the builder was putting them in, I don't know if it was required, but it was two trees, that the builder was.
Michelle, do you know?
I don't know, it's definitely, uh, I don't know, I think they're gonna be one or two, not every single lot. If they're going to be planted, one will be thirty-two, or, 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 send it, depending on whatever any utility fact, there aren't gonna be, there's gonna be lots, so he can't get that, so. I know there's gonna be at least one tree that was required for each, and we're trying to replace, um, tree for tree, except for, and there is one, there's a couple of lots, uh. there's a couple of lots, um, of parcels on Richland, where there are three Bradford pairs, and those three will come out, and then two will go back. Two, two, four.
Okay?
Good.
Yeah, sounds good.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next up is our community development manager, welcome, Michelle.
Good evening, Council, how are you today, evening?
Good.
I love these young guys, the students are just so happy to be here. Okay, so, uh, I appreciate your patience with my report coming in, in the supplement as opposed to your packet. There was a lot of detail that had to go into council packet, and that had to get to you, and so we left the report for a supplement, so, um, thank you very much. Uh, before I go into my verbal updates, do you have any questions for me?
Okay.
Yeah, in the supplement, the third page of the supplement, I ask, uh, Michelle for a certification on the vested notion regarding extension of the option period for the thirty forty five round three pound rail development, that's item M one. So my read in the packet on page one thirty nine, uh, talks about option period extension, this is from that initial agreement. In the event developers making active good faith progress for obtaining conceptual plans, study them for a format that needs to extend the option period, city and D D A agree to grant an additional four month extension, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, then it says, upon the developer's request for additional time beyond the extension, the city and D D A may grant such a request in their full discretion. Uh, this is just a motion in the packet, I'm not trying to, um, discuss this item at this time, I'm trying to, um, seek additional clarification on suggested motion. Um, so that when it gets time of making more, so I ask for clarification as to whether or not, and a request for an additional extension was contingent upon making active, active good faith progress to me, and read that that's required for the first extension request, but not for the second, uh, but Michelle, it seems that you may be read otherwise, so I just wanted to drop it with attention to the fact that I asked a question in the packet, uh, so that if you wanted to write additional information, uh, or let me get to the item, people can.
Why don't we address that one again, um, so we don't have to delay, uh, when that comes up. Um, the, the language in predevelopment agreement allows for this additional extension at the developer's request, and the D D A and the city are vested with the responsibility of being able to, granted or not, at their sole discretion. Um, call it my fighting background, that is very open and subjective, and so what I did for consistency is suggest language that you find a, a finding of fact, which would be that they're either making progress, et cetera, or they're not, if you're, when you make your, uh, when you make your motion. So, uh, Jamie's right, there isn't specific language, um, it's your sole discretion. I think it's, it's a change in dividing finding the fact one way or the other. Thank you for clarifying, thank you.
Well, if I can give you that.
Okay, so verbal updates, the D D A, as you all know, are updating the strategic plan. The current strategic plan is just that, it's a strategic plan, but it also has the development, um, and TIF plan, um, the tax increment financing plan, that version which is required by state law, um, because it tells, you know, like, what you're projecting, your capture, uh, amounts to be, um, the timeframe, excuse me, and what those, um, um, projects will be. What the D D A is doing is separating those, because the development in TIF plan is a long, long range plan, and there's a very formal process that has to be, um, undertaken, if you're going to amend it. Whereas a strategic plan is, is, uh, is a, more of a standard planning development, you're coming up with some details about the projects you wanna undertake, and specific goals, objectives, strategies, and action items to make sure those have that strategy, strategic. Um, uh, so the development in TIF plan has been prepared, that's the part that meets the state's requirements. Um, um. Now, this is going to be asked at its next meeting to schedule a public hearing to consider that plan, and the date would be October ninth, year first thing in October. Um, um, you will get copies of the draft plan, et cetera. The D D A hasn't, has adopted a resolution to amend the plans, so it sort of sets everything in motion. Staff will get the letters out to the taxing jurisdiction, uh, public hearing notice will go out, et cetera. Um, so that's the, that's the, the development in TIF plan. But as part of the strategic plan update, the D D A is having a survey done, and you'll see these little, uh, flyers popping up all over a neighborhood near you. Uh, they're all in the kiosks right now, we're asking all the businesses, and put them in their windows, you know, we got the Q R code, we'll have to survey, but it's less than five minutes, but it will provide some very useful data for the consultant that's doing our market studies to, to be able to utilize and make some, uh, recommendations and suggestions. I have physical copies of the survey, if you would like them, and our intern, Owen Bellis, was able to get it up on the city's website today. So, um, uh, we'll do a press release to the local paper to really get this moving, um, so that we can get as much input from folks as possible. We did have a tent at Dexter Days, um, that was, that was well received, and we're working with, um, uh, farmer's market manager to have a, um, um, a tent there for at least one Saturday, so, uh, you have any question, Courtney?
The don't, what's the name of the citizen, maybe we need to form as a part of the D D A vision?
It's, it's called, yeah, thank you for bringing that up, it's the, um, Development Area Citizens Council, and whenever you've got a hundred residents or more living within your downtown developer authority district, you have to establish this council. Um, it is a, it's just a recommending body, um, but they look at the plan, they give you feedback, you take it or you don't. Um, the, um, uh, the D D A takes it or they don't, council takes it or they don't. Um, um. We sent out letters, um, to all the residents within the district, I wanna say back in April. Um, I received seven or eight different emails, uh, letting, you know, that people were interested. I sent them applications so that they could fill them out, um, I've received one back, I contacted, um, um, uh, Chad Billman lives in the district, he has submitted an application. Um, I've sent, uh, emails specifically to our two guests that speak from one fifty Jeffords, um, I've not heard anything from them. Uh.
What I want to.
Trying to give people.
We're gonna be actively looking to fill that committee, and we'll be adding that as a committee for, for, for.
We, we need to.
We need how many?
We need nine, and we need to do that, we need to do that within the next two weeks, because that needs to be set up, and we need to have a meeting before council acts on good development.
Okay. Thank you for all of that.
And thank you for bringing that up, I appreciate that.
Yeah, you're welcome.
If there are any other questions?
Thank you, good work.
Thank you.
Uh, as I move down, community reports, uh, Zach had asked that a lot of the meeting minutes from the Dexter, Friday, are to be included. Um, they got included under your, your, or, 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 have any of them there, or on the bottom of the, there?
And, and my, I believe that the, the F D A had the building just pop out of our runs, and the shared runs appearing, that didn't happen. Um, as I noted, we have a couple reports, other things, other subcommittees here, I figured it'd be important to include that for everyone at least to see, because it's the thing we spend the most money on, so it's gonna be more of a normal basis.
I had one member of the public, uh, contacting me about the, um, specific addresses on the one reported, and whether that could be more generalized, so, you know, twelve thirty one, whatever street, it could be the twelve hundred block, for privacy reasons, so I'm planning to talk to people, I'm talking about that, I haven't had a chance to do that, even on, I haven't really moved down, but find a letter, anything like that, it was definitely made by all of our residents. Um, it's an opposite city manager, okay?
Yeah, just on that point, I can appreciate, uh, concerns about citizen privacy. I, uh, I think as part of that request, I think for internal process control issues, you have to tell the organization to understand what this would make us to do, but what actually is public, could be something for general.
Well, that's right.
Right, yeah, I would have asked.
They've been made public for years, so, and, yeah, hopefully our software can do it easily.
Right, but that's big internally for their own process control, et cetera, they, they, they may play that level of.
I just haven't had a chance to give the truth that. We have new software to track, helping to track that, so I don't know what, what you can do.
And I just have, I have one follow up question on that, what is the estimate, uh, per call, do we, that thing that's discussed, how much would each call be possibly? The thing.
Well, there's, um. Let's just use an example, if, um, if the budget is three million, and there's three hundred calls, then each call, that, that amount, thousand bucks.
That's true.
Yeah, I mean, it's, that's, that's simple, because at the end of the year, it's, if you're setting a call, like, that, boy.
Okay.
So, truly. You.
Well, you take those out, subtract out the mutual rate, right, pretty quickly, I mean, it's a, it's divided by the number of us. Well, yeah, so, and to get to a closer number, when you subtract out the mutual rate, it's actually two hundred, it's left with the three hundred, I think, so you, you end up with a higher run volume than what we found.
So if city of Dexter calls over city of Wester, was that correct?
Correct, mutually, probably not in the bottom, you're not in. And, 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 and shared.
Which means it's two thousand or three thousand dollars.
For, for one.
Yeah.
That's your one. Okay, I have not you, Justin?
Sure. Um, so that last week was my first comeback, in, in a couple of weeks. Um, but, uh, we, probably made it for player not four, it went really well. Um, thank you to Jack for, we worked on that, we had really great weather, and I think it showed in the numbers. Um, we have filled our two open D P W positions. Um, the first, uh, person to fill vacancy started last week, um, second will be starting next week. Um, one item I did want to bring up, um, we, we got some emails, um, about, uh, door to door solicitors, and, um, I, 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 through the, the city manager channels, I, I know that, um, other communities have implemented, uh, order to do a no knockless, and I wanted to see if that was something that, that council had interest in, in pursuing, or, uh, I got, not bother.
No?
Um, I will say, I think I brought up another meeting, there, there has, I need my next door neighbor, um, another neighbor across the street, they expressed some concern, and I'm sure they would be interested in it, assuming it was impacted. Um, I, I worry about the impact on staff to implement it, but you think you can manage it.
So my, my thought would be, we might as well make you do like an automatic list, like, like a Google form or something, or post them, and register themselves, and then you just print that list out, and give it to, well, whoever applies, and the ordinance will be applicable to, because there are some organizations that would fall outside of the eligibility of the ordinance to apply to them. Um, but, I mean, it seems like, like something that, you know, could be recently done, and I think would make a lot of people happy.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, my, what research shows that the no soliciting sign might actually serve the same purpose that they themselves, they're really forceful, but that's something I would want to get our little company opinion on, so is that, somebody on the no soliciting sign, is that, is, and they're, you know, how, how it comes to them, can they just, then report that, and that becomes a forceful thing? So if that's the case, I'm not inclined to, you know, put in additional, some, now, they already have something that works for that purpose, things maybe redundant, so I haven't, we're not, so, I'd be curious to get that.
So?
Um, yeah, I have also heard from many, um, of my neighbors that would really appreciate something like that, um, and I know those, you know, soliciting signs don't work anyway, um, because I have one at the door, and there are still people coming. Um, yeah, so, but something that is more, I think, um, are from, is from the city handed out, it puts that in a different meaning, and takes onus from the residents that they have to follow up and do the reporting, and all of that, that they can just add their address to a list, and that list is handed by the city, it has a very different meaning, um, and it doesn't put the, the onus on the residents that have to do it every single time, or every single.
What?
Yeah, I would agree with, um, what Simon just said, and as far as residency, I think that something like this, it, it's not a bad thing to have more than one channel to try to stop it because of the lack of effectiveness in this type of area with any sort of, um, regulations. I also think that from a safety standpoint, it's something that is, would be good to have, um, people looking alone, don't want people knocking on their door, um, they don't have a dog, like I do, you know, ready to bark at someone, um, I just, yeah, I think it's, I, I would also see this.
All right, so, that's how much we've been seeing, yeah, anyway. Um. Those were the, the big things, did they have any vitamins?
So what's the, in it, so? So, I, I read site plans the middle of Friday, I was like, this?
Yeah, so.
So, Denver, they have submitted their, uh, site plan and an application, and that will be, um, uh, personally, that, I'm not going to consult, I don't think that, that area, um, I do have unfinished, we, unamended language for the development agreement, um, so that can consider that, um, as a site there.
Thank you.
And then, um, David and Kurt are, um, moving, moving into preliminary design, and, uh, I think they'll, they will have some questions that we'll need to bring back to council as far as, uh, yeah, sponsored, you know, what, what, what is officially in, what is officially out? Um, and, um, right, that is to bring that back to council, so you can have that conversation.
Good. Danny?
I have a question about the Baker Road resurfacing, the project, when is that happening, and the development for that, and?
So, so, um, I mean, we, we, we brought a draft of the, uh, layout, a couple, two meetings ago?
Okay.
Um, the, the road work is scheduled for summer of twenty twenty four, so, so next year. Um, but, uh, O H M is gonna be, not, not finalizing, but like getting closer to, you know, ninety percent lands, um, so we'll bring that to, to council for one last review.
So, I was from a resident very detailed, see that idea suggestion on the horrible PowerPoint slide about that project, I don't know the best way to, uh, share that. That's on you?
Yeah, you've been getting that with me.
Okay.
Um, but, uh, it should be noted that, um, that is a M dot left project, and so our budget on that is limited. So, you know, significant changes over and above, what we saw as a part of the, the. So, you know, significant changes over and above what we saw as a part of the, the preliminary lands. Um. We probably won't be able to accommodate, because we're, we're already pushing. What is allowable through, through the state process.
Alright.
Uh, budget wise.
Thank you.
Hey, for the questions, Justin? Okay, um, we're down to my work, trying to keep it brief, but I'm happy to spend later, I know we have a busy agenda, a couple of people, yeah. I did, uh, I had a meeting with Sarah Tugard from Faith in Action. Uh, for last Friday, um, she notified with her, prior to that meeting, that Audrey was gonna attend also for Pamela. Um, so I double, drove to attend with me, so it was two to two, uh, so the speaker, uh, will be for about an hour. Um, Faith in Action has taken some steps to uh hire two new counselors. They basically said that. Their efforts during the first year provided the support of the time. They didn't feel more successful, they paired more um. Appropriate counsel, I guess, without the training, but in principle. And uh, I thought that was a proactive step. Uh. We talked very openly about the difficulties that they had throughout the year with different. Uh, situations, uh, they're very open to, to talking and reading, um, given that you have interest in wanting to. Um, meet with them, I'm happy to meet with you with them, um, we can set that up and. I didn't see it scripted on the agenda, so I'm. I'm asking, um.
I'll be following up, I'm guessing next meeting.
Okay, I'm happy to have the download, I took, you know, two pages of notes, happy to share that stuff with you, uh, there is some turnover in the tenants. Um. One, just because the family got bigger, the house inside is too, too little, people will be moving on, um, another one is due to the phone eviction process that they have. Um. But the communication is open, um, they're aware of the challenge that they have, they did um. Compare the first year uh here in Dexter to the difficulties that Sharon M. has had in Chelsea when they opened up their. Center there. Um, but I just found a report that I did, they did be able to meet there, and Audrey is still there, so she had said she was retiring, so they won't negotiate, still involved. And then after that meeting, uh, had a meeting with Josh and Justin and Steve Fineman, who's coordinating the vice president upgrade. I will get the um, agenda that he shared with us in the next package, that happened after the meeting came out. Uh, wanted everybody to see the kind of the thought process that he's going through. Patrick, I pray to march through history, that is a clever name, uh, the uh. Generation old, or attempt to be generation old, in that presentation, focused on a different era that Dexter had. Uh, evolved since eighteen twenty-four, so I'm excited about that. Anybody have any questions for me on anything, I was out of town a bunch in Texas, I took a few days. Had everybody's taste in the weather, we have this meeting. Okay, I will keep moving. Zach, I trust we covered the, the stuff out, well. Okay, we are down to the consent agenda with more items on that.
Uh, yes, I, we approved four items on the consent agenda. Bill and payroll, the amount of ten hundred and ten thousand, four hundred and fifty-eight dollars and one cents. Consideration of build out GMC thirty-five hundred HD dump truck by truck, and trailer straggles, we think for a month, not exceed thirty-three thousand, two hundred and ninety-six dollars. Consideration of purchasing a refrigerated VOD incubator from J scientific for a month, not exceed six thousand and fifty dollars, and consideration of award of payment for ag seal services to K M D S, well, seal coating, seal coating Inc. For a month, not exceed twenty-five thousand dollars.
Thank you for reading all of them, motion by Hubbard, you have a second?
Second.
Second, that's our drill, thank you. Murder, please spell the vote to approve the consent agenda, Adam.
Halliday, yes, semi fair.
Yes.
Black?
Yeah.
Hubbard, yes. The thoughts?
Oh.
Griffin? Yes, cute.
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you, we are down to unfinished business, um, in the fourth one. A business, L one, consideration of right away for the applications from the Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy. There are three applications, so I can think of one at a time, um. For the purpose of discussion, is someone willing to make a motion to, 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 to have a table, okay, I don't have to go introduce our friends, shall we go? Don't. I believe the first one is on page four ten. One then, yeah, thanks Zach. Four M A, is, is related to the soil gas railway gradations, with a city of thirty-one fifteen Broad Street.
Um, the. Four M A soil gas railway prevent application. With the. Conditions listed in the back end of page one ten, in, along the line.
Thank you for the motion, and so it's supported, is that it?
Okay.
Yeah, okay. All right, so we have a little. And so, first, I can buy it. Lot, thank you both, all right, shall I turn it over to you then, or Chris?
Uh, they have a presentation, so we'll do this the way we do for the site plans, we have, you know, we'll do the presentation, and instead we'll come in with the, the few comments and speaking.
Okay.
Well, thank you, thank you, council, we're pleasure to be here, uh, I just want to make a statement, uh, so. Eagle needs to perform these investigations to evaluate risks to public health from highly volatile compounds. Uh, these compounds can have acute effects at certain concentrations, especially to high-risk populations. Such as pregnant women and children, uh, the longer the efforts to obtain the access from the city go on. The longer these risks go uninvestigated, and the risk of unacceptable exposure continues. Uh, so I'm gonna talk about our T C E investigation, T C E is trichloroethylene. It is a chemical that is associated with uh like metal fabricating, occasionally dry cleaners, um. So that's why we're here, uh, next slide please. But just a little background, uh, Eagle has been seeking permits to operate in Dexter in some capacity since March twenty twenty-two. Uh, our mission is to protect public health and the environment, that's what we're working towards here. There are concentrations of trichloroethylene in the soil and groundwater uh that warrant further investigation. Um, and we know that contaminated groundwater has migrated off of source properties. Based on some two thousand and eight data that was collected from the city. Um, as I mentioned, trichloroethylene is an acute hazard, uh, especially to children, pregnant women, and developing illnesses. Uh, Josh, will you go to the next slide, please? So this is a little bit about our investigation, um, it's relatively simple, you'll see on this map, there is the probable source area, that's that orange area right there. Um, our initial investigation area, we want to put four soil gas wells around the Dancer's Edge property at thirty-one fifteen Broad Street. Uh, the reason that we're beginning there and focusing there is because, as I mentioned, there are those, you know, women, children. That are more susceptible to these chemicals, and they have a high likelihood of congregating at that thirty-one fifteen Broad Street. Uh, so we're gonna put four wells there, they're drilled down to five feet below the ground surface. Um, some equipment is installed in, and that allows us to sample what's actually in the gas inside the soil. We go down five feet so that we don't get any interferences from the atmosphere that will dilute the sample. Um, so we are sampling the soil gases, essentially, these are the vapors that are emitted from contaminated groundwater. Um, and then we'll be comparing those results to what are called media-specific screening levels. And in this case, trichloroethylene's media-specific screen level on missile is sixty-seven micrograms per cubic meter. Next slide please. And then what comes next, so after we do this investigation, um, you know, we'll get the numbers back, we'd be free to share that information with the city, um. We may need to go inside of some of these buildings, um, to do further investigation, determine what exposures are happening. Um, if there are unacceptable exposures in those buildings, uh, that they may need to be mitigated, uh, vapor mitigation systems. Are often uh similar to radon mitigation systems, I don't know if you're familiar with them, but they basically ventilate the sub-slab gases. Into the atmosphere so they don't enter the building, uh. Here, you know, you may not find anything actionable, we just don't know, um, the data that we do have is fifteen years old. Um, these chemicals are persistent in the environment, so we just want to make sure that um. Nobody's being exposed or harmed. So, um. That's all I have, we're just.
Um, well, I know, I noticed in the agenda that at the very end, there is um. Like recommendations. Starting on page one ten, unfortunately, we got a revised work plan to y'all late on Friday afternoon, so I realize that. We probably have not been able to look at that, but the vast majority of these conditions will be satisfied by that packet.
Right.
And we provided it as your, for your consultant and your self-study.
Thank you, Lisa.
I do have one question, I guess, hello?
Okay.
Um, there is one, of the one eleven, C, um, start with the, the impacts above by effort found. What's that basically, our step-up plan, however, I, I'm not understanding that with the condition below it, which is B, that basically says we would need another written permit, so.
Brad, Michelle, talk to the. Yeah, yeah, sure, please ask question.
So. What? Why, why did you start looking in March of twenty-two, and what happened since two thousand and eight, and? If this was a concern, why did you look at it in two thousand and eight?
Those are good questions, um, so the first question was what started this, so Sam was gonna be speaking in a moment. Uh, he's doing an investigation at the uh, formerly a part of gas station, um, it's at the corner of Jeffords and. Maine, I think, I'm sorry.
You're right.
But he found trichloroethylene in the sub-slab soil gas at that gas station, um. So, you know, he had proposed doing an investigation uh around the city to assess those impacts, um, and. You know, the reason that it really hasn't, so. Why hasn't it been looked at since two thousand and eight, um, vapor intrusion, which is what we're trying to investigate. Um, has really been a developing concern, and um. I just don't think that. We really knew that it was an issue before. You know, Sam started looking at it, um, I just started in the district a couple of years ago, so.
But there, there's been some, you know, help me either Scott or Tom, or Chris Wilson, there's been a. Uh, was it court action to, to help kind of figure out if they told, pre-will, the pre-court fight, right, or the.
Ah, that's right, that's right, right, and, and so the grand court is the parent company of Clark, or whatever, taking over for Clark, and because of that.
Initiative in the courts has dictated Eagle to hire Sam, Sam, raise your hand back there, Sam was a consultant. Um. And his company has been doing testing for Eagle that is part of number. Uh, it's B and C, sorry, they had that number, B and C, we got these, they'll know first, because that's how we did it back in May.
Yeah.
So that's what prompted this government. In March, and then we've been trying to determine. You know, how did they, how did they classify the T C E, or are they depending on that because of proximity of thirty forty-five Broad, where we know that we measured that? Or is it some other source, and there's been a little bit of, you know, concern on our end, over the letter writing that's gone back and forth, related to when the. Our B A of the center, our phase two and all that stuff, um.
Will purchase thirty forty-five.
Right, exactly, ten years ago, yeah. And anyway, the, the point is, we, we had a couple of, of good meetings, I think, with Eagle. The first one led to the action that we took in May, which is to give out permission. Conditional permission, admittedly. Um, for thirty-one fifteen, which is. Motion was in front of us. The other two are related more to the gas station, the proximity around the gas station of what they measured. But they're all, they're all equally important, from, from beginning. You know, once in the ground, or the groundwater, I guess, first thing.
Thank you for clarifying.
I'm gonna mess that up.
No, that's a nice synopsis, and I appreciate that, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Jerry?
Just uh. So here this night, I think, yeah, we, I'm sure one, fine, um, so I'm curious to know, is there some trade-off here, there's some cost to the city or something, I've said it, why? Been scrutinizing this process so carefully, what am I missing here, why would we not? Want to do this?
I think, I think property owners get nervous whenever. Probably might point the finger and say, you're responsible for causing that. You know, you've read about different places have gotten in the third order, that's you got in the third. You know, we, we bought a property. Not that we owned it, prior to when it used as cover, we bought a property, the D A bought a property. And has contaminants on it, and I don't think any of us want those contaminants to be. Nitrated or moving, um, would be why we've gone through our new care operations and. Have to cover the concrete and such, delivering, or doesn't. Compete, or we only doesn't compete any, spreading of it, but it's not an easy situation, like I said, there were a couple of letters written. Um, maybe perfectly normal to receive, but when, in the D A received one, there was a nervousness. On what was being said, and, uh, staff, and our attorney, and our environmental consultant. To help us be confident to proceed through here, um. But I don't think there's any real intent to take our time and slow down, it's just we've done very particularly.
So with regard, I guess, to this particular item. Do, does our consultant, I mean, are there reservations with the change to that?
They're, they're on next.
So I guess it's me for you, so yeah, I mean, enough other good luck questions for them, I guess, that's.
Michelle, quarterback, this is, okay, Thomas, Scott, you can say something to us, no, please say it.
Okay.
Is that, Zach, is that?
Yeah, I have a question for.
Chris, Lisa, can you not leave yet?
Or, sorry, sorry, I didn't realize this, sorry, Lisa. Please, you're wrong. You made, you made two comments, and one was a five-foot board.
That's right.
Okay, and then your other comment was, then we need to go into some basements?
That's depending on what we get in those five-foot boards, so.
My question is, why aren't we in the, why don't we go to the basements first? Well, if we have that big of a concern that these levels could be high.
That's a fantastic question, um, so prior to May, we did have access to the Dancer's Edge Dance Studio. Um, before our investigation was supposed to begin there, um, the owner revoked access, did not allow us in there. Um, however, you know, we still need to make that assessment, so, um, we've just gone to the next logical step, then look if we don't have that access. No.
Does the old car station have a, a basement?
Uh, I don't believe so, I don't think it does.
Is there a bank behind it in there?
Uh, I, it's possible, I'm not familiar with the bank.
Because that has obvious.
Well, it's, yeah, it's in that yellow potential, it's more stuff.
Josh, that guy. That was there, there's a green, the green.
Yeah, I think, I think you actually, I think the bank is right there, yeah, okay, so.
Oh, thank you, Brandon, my goodness, of course.
Yeah, and so, so like, if they find something, then they step out, and, and the P and C is, is in the step out.
Okay. Thank you. For that.
Are you looking for anything besides T C E? I mean, we're going to run a full sweep of volatile organic chemicals, um, that'll include like gasoline constituents, some other fluoridated compounds. Um, but that's the majority of what we'll be sampling for.
Then, no good questions?
The family.
Yeah.
Excuse me.
Okay, oh, you know, um. So to answer um Lisa's questions, C and D actually are the same, um, there are many things that I'm pretty good at, but. Environmental, the, the details of the environmental. Um, there are many things that I'm pretty good at, but environmental, the the details of the environmental. I thought volatilization to indoor air pathways was different from the soil gas, and that's why it's in two separate places. Tom explained to me that they're actually the same, so those would just be merged into to one. Excuse me, if you have questions, um, um, our consultant Tom actually did review the revised. Uh, work plan, um, and he provided a letter this afternoon for us. Um, I'll have him come up and speak, but I I think it has to be said, not only did he, he do the original. Um, review of the uh, uh, of this particular one, he also did the other reviews and got them in. Um, um. So the two we have those for today, so, um, and he's actually on vacation and his grandkids are in town, so I think. I think we gotta give him kudos for that. So, Tom, do you want to come up and talk about it? I still have you leave your motion the way it is because there's no way for me to revise the motion. I'll apply this.
Yeah, so some of the issues, we're just getting to details, right? Uh, getting able to tell us things like, what are they analyzing for? Questions that you ask, how often are they going to be analyzed? What are their procedures? So they they did provide us with a work plan, um, and I I forget the date of that work plan, it was um. Anyway, it was a couple of weeks ago. Uh, we reviewed it, uh, we came up with a list of additional requests for information, and they were nice enough to turn around very quickly. And get it to us on Friday, I think it was Friday, is that right, Lisa? And so, um, I was on vacation, so I didn't review it till today, so I apologize for that. But the bottom line is, they addressed all the issues that I had. And so the work plan component, the the technical issues of frequency, location, uh, analysis, quality assurance. Um, what are they going to do with with the wells after they're done the deconditioning process, removal process? Um, my recommendation is that that's all satisfactory, so that the work plan requirements have been met. Um, in terms of giving them the right way access, we have enough information to know what they're doing and how they're doing.
So, yeah, I did have a, just, and you shall just see more clarification, put the agenda that says M four A instead of four M A.
Hold on just a second.
I just want to make sure. The memo all says four M A, but. You definitely just.
Uh, yeah, I I use the exact um labeling that is in your previous agenda. And and so the agenda that you have here, it's still the same, it's for A.
It is, it's there.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, I switched the, I, it's M four A, I've got four M A.
Um, Tom, in your memo, you mentioned that um. You recommended we, we were, but they had a notification for all sample events, which makes sense, and then you said the option to collect replicate samples. What is the cost of doing that approximately?
Um. The big cost is going to be the analysis, a couple of hundred, three hundred dollars, four hundred dollars, I don't know, they have to. Sit down and and look at it. You you don't have to do that. Um, clearly Eagle's going to collect the samples and they're going to share the data with you. But it's always a good idea to to do replicate samples whenever anybody's sampling on your property, just so you have a comparison with your own lab. So maybe if you want to, maybe two of them, you could do four of them, I can get you a call for that.
I'd be interested in at least understanding what the cost is if you don't have.
I get that, I'm interested.
Thank you. Do you have any questions on what the motion is, or Michelle, or some of you know, for Tom? We are motion by Sonny Faro, second by Slaugh, to approve. So the act of recovery application, uh, and and we. And we all love that, right? The other conditions that are there, that we've been.
It's likely.
Yeah. Okay, George, please go.
Hubbard, yes. Schlaugh?
Yes.
Griffin, yes. Sunny Farah?
Yes.
Alda, yes. Michelle's?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, motion carries on item O one A. I'm going to make a motion on O one B, so. Special question? These will be sample monitoring wells located in Main Street Road right away.
And the public, if this actually is two applications, it's the groundwater eighty one forty, and it's the public property access permit. For the two wells behind the eighty one forty credit.
I want to approve the revised groundwater sampling right away permit application for sampling monitoring wells located within Main Street right away. The public property permit application for sampling of fifty groundwater monitoring well located at eighty one forty Main Street related to the ground floor financing settlement. Um, subject to the conditions that are outlined, we can have the usual eleven of.
Perfect. Motion by Griffin?
Second.
Second file that, same deal. Okay, questions? There's no separate presentation on this one. They said.
I could say if you want.
Everybody's in where that you want to sample this? There's five hundred eighty pages of flum.
Um, so with with both of these uh next two items, Eagle did provide uh supporting documentation. In the same way they have they did with soil gas, and I I did a memo, I don't know if you've been.
But they don't have this.
Okay, I did that again today, too. Um, that that, all of that is sufficient for understanding what they're doing and why they're doing. In in this case, they're existing wells, there's no new wells, um, they're just sampling existing wells, which is fairly straightforward.
Thank you. No more questions? Okay, George, please go to approve one B.
Michelle's?
Yes.
Alda, yes. Hubbard, yes. Schlaugh?
Yeah.
Griffin, yeah. Sunny Farah?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, motion carries. So anyone who made a motion for, for R C. Third on. Is one.
I'll make a motion to approve four and C, so I'll say the right way for application subject to the condition. It's a three one as well.
Perfect. The better. Excellent. Then right over. Okay, question? Okay, George, please go.
Sunny Farah?
Yes.
Michelle's?
Yes.
Griffin, yes. Alda, yes. Hubbard, yes. Schlaugh?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you both for your presentations and having a meeting. Tom, God, appreciate you being here for that, too. We are down to, let me finish business item L two, especially the home of the. For administration of early voting. And I'll do that.
Um, so with uh the uh changes resulting from the November of twenty twenty two. Um, voting rates uh valid initiative, um. One of the, I think, out of that is the implementation of early voting. And as a part of that, uh, the county is offering uh to uh do the administration of. And of a series of early voting sites, um, for all of all the. Um, and as of right now, um, almost all, I think there there's two, uh, there are exceptions. Uh, are likely to to go in with walking on down. Uh, we do have the option of administering ourselves, um, but with it being so new. Um, the 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 entire process of uh early voting administration. Um, my my recommendation would be to to go in location. Um, they are looking for a letter from municipalities, uh, by the power of aid as um. Indication of intent to participate in that, um, and then they'll be looking for a final uh approval from council and boards. Um, by the end of September.
So do you have a motion to authorize you to write the notes to the intent to participate?
So, um, if if public feel comfortable doing that, um, I I would be okay, I would go with that. Um, I just want to make sure that we don't get to um the council operating agreement. Um, that either the first meeting or second meeting in November and. Have submitted our intent and then have also been.
Would you rather we didn't then? I was just trying to get, meet your thing, they showed us up.
Sure, so so if if council feels comfortable authorizing staff to to submit a letter and have.
I mean, it's just a. For a good degree, I really want to feel good, right? I mean, but it isn't going to be, I mean.
Right. And and um the the county did did together the the presentation of the impact. And I think about how I was um pretty well uh over what we're looking for, uh, when they uh. If they were to do the administration, um, the idea as of right now would be that our our early voting site would be at the Siobhan Shap Hall. Um, and then um Josh and I, as as uh the first office staff, would have a hand in um. One or two days uh supervising that early voting site. So that we 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 get, we we ultimately get a feel for um how that is.
Is your conference manager, which you want to make the motions to authorize the notes to the test of. You'll make that, sir. Thank you all. Okay, any questions? For that, Jack, you want to come on with this discussion item? But, uh, second. One of the things that we were sold when we voted on the cityhood is that we would get to run our elections, and I know it's cheaper. But that's was one of the things for us to do, self determination, so. I'm not entirely supportive of it. I know democracy isn't cheap, whether it's representative, Republican, or Democrat, um, that's all.
So and 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 we'll still be writing our 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 regular polling locations. Um, we're in person voting on October day, uh, along with the uh absentee uh voter county board. Uh, for those who lose the bid after the elections.
Well, I'm going to go one, you're up, right? What are your findings, you don't? What about their life?
I guess, um, I guess a quick comment, um. While I see Zach's point, I mean, in some ways, I don't think it's really equivalent. Um, to what was being discussed, those city have discussed them, but aside from that, I. Even even with that work, seeing that it's a one year commitment, number one, and number two, but more importantly, number two, I think that we. That I would like to see anything possible done to increase access and ease for voting for everyone. So this does that, so I'm supportive of it.
The the, and I think the the biggest benefit of going in the company is maybe it's consistency. Um, their their messaging will be to sit across all, I mean, basically, they're basically error. Same same hours, you have, uh, we know we're messaging it, it will show all of the locations, the the sheer. Um, site, which I believe is going to be the watch on L R C on on odd path. Where anybody in the county can go, um, and then our our site is.
Yeah, I would also like to comment that this is taking election out away from the city of Dexter is just adding another option for those. Who might choose to exercise it themselves, not that we're forcing anybody that they have to do that. They still can do absentee ballots within the city, they still can walk here. Um, or fill precinct on um on the election day and and vote as well. Um, so it's really allows residents to have more options. Um. Also, as you mentioned, Justin mentioned, there is a lot of learning to to do this year because of this. This doesn't mean that next year, if we have done our learning and and we feel that it can be all done in here, we might put that back, so. And it's a good job.
Please remind me the motion.
It's a motion to let the city manager file a notice, the city vector wants to participate in coming through the voting process prior to September eight. With the final adoption, and then we appear to come in sometime down on our Tuesday.
A lot of these.
Right. Yeah, the 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 actual agreement has been adopted by by the refitting.
If the day was September eleven, that would have waited, we couldn't do it immediately, but they just two days before, three days already. Okay, George, just go.
What?
Yeah.
Sunny Farah?
Yes.
Michelle's?
Well.
Hubbard, yes. Griffin, yeah. Alda, yes. Yeah.
Yes. Motion carries, thank you, we're down to page four of our agenda. Uh, new business item, M one, consideration of the request for additional extension of the auction period for thirty forty five Broad Street. Which is that her?
Move to grant, I'm just got development group, an additional extension of the auction period for an additional one hundred days, our twelfth to November twenty twenty three. The due diligence items describe its request dated August seventh, twenty twenty three. Upon determining that the county sale development group is making active big progress on fixing the project, pursuing section two of the C vector. Downtown redevelopment opportunity, predevelopment agreement in October twelfth, twenty twenty two, subject to. County sale shall complete geotechnical site investigations and submit a geotechnical report as due diligence item number eight.
Okay, thank you, so motion on page one thirty five with motion to grant, and is, is it second to support? Yeah, thank you. Okay, no more questions?
That. Why hasn't the geotechnical been started yet?
So if if it did, um, there was that um unfortunate situation in February. Um, the the latest and finishing, they got all the mitigation business care of, and um. Then the RAP program threw them up, um. They were kind of getting that done, they did their phase two, now they're going back to finish the geotechn.
If the extension is not granted, there is still an opportunity for the going for the project, right?
If this is not granted, then. We they have to come back with a suggestion for another way to do this, either going straight purchase agreement.
Well, because initially they said they didn't want to, it just becomes non-exclusive, we can say about people.
Well, yeah.
Right, anyone, any.
Just starting exclusively, yeah.
So. Um, I I don't support extending it because there are a lot of issues with the project, I don't see the bills. Um, the promise and the need for the site, and I don't see that it's moved towards that direction.
You have anything?
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to make sure everyone has seen. Uh, the second to our page in our supplement. They're named on there. Because the other names in the D E A, D E A, they make some claims regarding this project. Um, other members of the D E A. Uh, I think that somebody is willing to make this on public record. That'll be as well on the community. First time I'm hearing about it, I have no additional information, um, it strikes me. Um. We have in our city charter. Section six oh six, reuse investigation, the city council shall establish by ordinance procedure to make investigations into the affairs of the city. And a conduct by the city department officer agency. and according to the city department officer agency. As best as I can tell, we do not have such an ordinance on file. I think it would be in the best interest of everybody, I guess, and staff in consultation with the council look into what what further understanding, understanding what led to this letter would look like. There are many reasons I have cause about this project. This now is a big one. I will not be supporting an extension.
So I think Council first approached us in the first quarter of twenty twenty-two. I don't remember the exact date, like early twenty twenty-two. You may recall the DDA had gone out for our Q. For the holes or bits of qualifications, relationships with parties. Therefore, might be interested in any development project, leasing the property, buying the property, some combination thereof. Actually, a former DDA member, Phil Lucas, was strong and supportive of doing that, encouraged us to do that. After going through the four, six, eight week maybe it was period where that we were advertising, we received zero recall, we received zero letters of interest, zero threat of your interest from anybody. The DDA. Didn't get anything. That Council post was shorter thereafter. And as you know, they've been working well. Through a process, they, they put forth the concept early on. They've been refining the concept. We've been operating under a pre-development agreement. They've been working diligently to talk about the project at the state level locally. They've been in charge of DDA, they've been in the planning commission, they've talked openly about what they're trying to do to provide additional housing in downtown. And sort of out of sequence from their schedule, the revitalization and placemaking grant two point oh. The second round of this grant became available during the second quarter of twenty twenty-three. As, as I think everybody knows, right now they have a approximately nine million dollar funding gap. But they're trying to fill to make sure project financially viable. The pre-development agreement was a vehicle that allowed them to do the necessary things on the property, whether it's environmental or geotechnical. We didn't require them to dig any holes. We didn't require them to dig one foot deep or twelve foot deep or twenty foot deep. All these are their choices. What they need to help prepare their cost estimates. And so far they have a funding gap. They, they worked really hard in cooperation with our staff and in working with our DDA to submit a RAP two point oh application at the end of June. And it's my understanding that we should receive formal feedback on that application sometime in late September, early October. As the timing of the development agreement, as it stood plays out, would expire in August. So they requested the extension. You know, you could debate, is it a perfect project? I haven't seen one yet that we refused. Okay? And we probably won't have one. But they're trying and our team is learning a lot about the project or property. They're sharing everything they're doing with us. That it goes in benefit to continuing our partnership with them. I plan to vote for this. Again, not because it's a perfect project. We are so early in this project, but they need time to see if they can find additional funding. And I think that it makes sense to extend it a hundred days for that. I've had honest conversations with Kevin and Eric, who's behind the shell, and me, but Kevin's with the board. They've worked really hard on this to here tonight. If you want to ask some questions, I'm sure they'd be happy to answer any. But this is this is a really important step. And then this is just putting eleven steps in the agreement. We don't have another ball in the air on this. We don't have anybody knocking on our door.
We can't engage in any of that.
Well, I know, so that's quite being, I mean, we should continue to, to play a role in this and good stewardship of the agreement at all. Anyway, it's funny to be on what the DDA went attempting and wrote about. But I think this passage of the DDA with one note. It was not filled.
Not to that.
So that was the resignation. I have not had a chance to read it out to Phil. I don't know why he wrote what he did. I haven't talked to him yet. But everybody's entitled with their opinion on that, so. You know, we don't make them one good or one bad.
Thank you. Can I ask Michelle to elaborate a little bit on in the supplement regarding the resignation you have added? Want to make sure that we also pay attention to that as well. So it's a something.
Yeah, so, so that's a great, it's a great point. You know, the DDA's are a misunderstood group by men that underline the overlapping layer of government. We created the village council, helped create for our town. And the members that participate in the DDA, the majority of the membership of that board are people that either live in the district, work in the district, own property in the district. Might be leaving something out.
Being state law for the fires.
That's how that works, put together. And so it's not, if you think about that, it's not unheard of for somebody that may work in the district or, or own property in the district to suggest that it be redeveloped. I've read some public comments online that people are confused by that. It's, that's how, that's how it was intended by the act. It was set up. Those people by nature of that have an interest in that area. So from time to time, there's gotta be, there's gotta be parties that own property in the district and, and that property gets redeveloped while they may be serving on board. And those members, you know, need to refuse themselves. If that's the case, for anything that they might be asking for building action. We have that situation going on right now. I don't know if that's what she, this is referring to the that. But we have a DDA member who owns property on Grant Street and has a project in front of our planning commission. And he's done nothing wrong in the process of doing it. I'm gonna bring it up.
Wow. I appreciate that clarification, because I was going to ask if we could see or have made known to us what these public comments, I mean, the personal comments aside, with the public comments are that have been made. And I know you don't, I mean, but, but what I'm saying is that, that background that you just gave does help me understand why a public comment may have been made that would be interpreted that way. So I appreciate that, because that did concern me.
Thank you. No further hands. Jordan, please call the vote to approve the request for the additional extension of one hundred days.
Michelle's?
No.
Alda? Yeah. Hubbard?
No.
Schlapp?
Yeah.
Griffin? No. Sammy Farah?
Yes.
Here.
Yes. So I think that carries four to three there, right? That's what I have to count.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. The extension after granted. Appreciate you all attending tonight. New business item, M two. Consideration of the organizational management resolution to remove alternate appointments. Among other things, we approve the amendments to organizational management resolution.
Inspector?
Okay, walking by, so I hear a second by Alda. Thank you. Then Inspector, you? That?
I'll just bring up, we, we do have a lot of committees out here that haven't met. I've been on finance committee, we, we've had one by eight years. Street sidewalk alley committee, it's not met. By eight years, utilities committee has not met.
My fault. Yeah, please, we're all committees are there, agreed. The term of what goes to the committee? Just set up for that. And they do require staff time, so when we don't need to meet, we don't, this party is a meeting. What?
I mean, I have a, I guess, a general question. So this idea that that it potentially creates conflict with the open meetings act, can you have? I mean, what, is there precedent for that? I don't want to be setting a precedent that there isn't. You know, that there isn't one already set for, because personally, I don't think it does, but I'm not an attorney. So I hope Scott has anything to say about this.
Well, I think, I think that I don't think it does either. But if there's any perception of it at all on this board or otherwise, I'm perfectly happy to remove it of this stuff.
Okay, I, I just don't even see that there's a protection here because there aren't three people and there aren't more than three people in the room at any given time. You know, we are allowed to have conversations one-on-one with each other or in a group under, you know, the forum number at any time. I mean, I, I just don't see, I just, I think that this is something that just in, that just, it puts a roadblock in the process that we don't need. I mean, we are all people who have busy lives, who don't get paid for this, like it's an full-time job. And we can't always be at every meeting, so I don't like the idea that we're sort of putting more pressure on us as council members with our time over something that's not a problem.
Mr. Bonzell, you want to weigh into this?
You don't have to. I would be happy to make a short comment if the council is interested.
I agree.
Okay.
That'd be mad, well. May I ask, if we're not interested, will you make a long statement?
Yeah.
Really? No. Scott Bonzell, that's in turn. I appreciate your comment, Ms. Hubbard. There actually are some cases that deal with situations where there could be, where you could have more people participating in a decision which would then be a deliberation toward a public policy position, which then could be perceived as a violation of the Open Meeting Act. So the courts are very, they are very supportive of open government decision-making, the decision-making process. And there have been a couple of cases in particular where there have been committees that eventually there is a majority of the, of the body that is participating, even if it's not simultaneous. So there is in particular one case where the court ruled that kind of round robin type of decision-making was a violation of the Open Meeting Act. So I, I understand that it's very, it's likely very unusual, but you could have three members present at one meeting and then at the next meeting, someone's gone and the alternate, alternate is there. And so you have a different three people that could eventually, it could be construed that there were four people for, you know, making a decision which would be a violation. So in a way, it's a conservative approach to avoid people feeling there's a perception that you might be violating the Open Meeting Act, Open Meetings Act. So that's why I thought it was better, a better approach would be to how to handle that. And a simple way to do it is just to, you know, remove the alternates. Thanks.
Thanks, back. Wow.
And I just say I appreciate that and that does change my mind if there is a precedent there. However, I still stick by what I said. I think it's ridiculous personally, but if that's, if it is what it is.
Joe?
As a clarification, it's not round robin voting. Round robin voting is having a list where people sign off and bring in the list into the meeting. So that there's not an indication of what it is. It's called round the horn voting. Just a clarification, because round robin is thrown out laughing. It's not a case.
Excellent, boy. Before we get too many more good points, I'm gonna call a vote. There's a call of vote.
Sammy Farah?
Yes.
Michelle's?
Yes.
Alda?
Yeah.
Griffin? Yeah. Hubbard?
Yes.
Schlapp?
Yeah.
Here.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you. We are down to M four, discussion on our votes for Siobhan Township interactive community related to some things in progress. Discussion I am, so I will let Michelle and who are the committee lead the discussion.
I'll fill in whatever the committee wants to do.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
I think Michelle did a good job with the memo that's included in the packet. We've had the two meetings. At the point we are, we're trying, one of the biggest parts of it was assessing goals of both sides and of the city. At the last meeting, we had a little bit of discussion. I don't think, I don't think either side is really put forward those goals necessarily. So we've been kind of meeting and discussing the situation and trying to get to those things, so. This summary that Michelle put together, that reference back to the master plan sort of gives a very high level for the city based on the documentation that already exists. There were a lot of discussions about open land preservation, the main hands development, how this would affect Dexter Crossing, you know, how would it impact Siobhan Township from access point? There was, there was a lot of those type of discussions, but like I said, this is a very sort of a high-level, not specific on exact items that might, you might fall out of a discussion, but I think it's, from standpoint of, it gives feedback to both the applicant and to the, to Siobhan Township to as something that we can use to work from and talk from and I know I have personal thoughts about the, the annexation itself, but this encompasses all those things in one way or another. Well, there are obviously specifics, and if council has specifics, then well, the council wants the committee to discuss with Siobhan Township. We can absolutely do that. If we look for that, at least I would look for that kind of direction. But I think this is a a very good document to work from when we go back to, to discuss this further with the township.
When is your next meeting, or any, please?
It is October. Have that been longer?
Okay, it doesn't exactly, I don't know.
It's October. It's toward the middle.
That's fine, that's close enough. I just, you can.
Yeah, I'm just gonna, I guess, provide some feedbacks to the committee. I, I mean, there's a lot of detail here. I appreciated that. I guess I kind of go back to where I started, I think a long time ago, which is what, what did it for the city? Especially if, if it seems like there is you know, the proposal is current, the price, it doesn't seem to be helping Siobhan Township and it's not clear if it's helping us, I mean. It seems to me the things that we're interested in are maybe absentee as well. And this now, additional items for those, is it kind of? And I don't know if you know, I would be fine seeing it stay preserved land firstly. Again, I would need to see more data adjusting what the additional units would do for the city and numbers and things like that. So in absence of that, I guess, you know, I don't know what, you know, we kind of what is in other situations, I don't know if you can handle that process of jurisdiction. Negotiate with that township, hey, you know, there's land, we check out that water and could be getting this broke. You know, I don't, I have no idea what happens in these negotiations, but if they are, if they don't. Um, but if they are, if they don't, you know, seem not interested in housing developments, which I guess is my read situation, which may or may not be accurate. Then in the negotiating point back, say, okay, well, here's what could be in it for us and you don't want this, you want this, what about, you know? I think I think you should see their response to that, say suppose, suppose you preserve it however, and um what, what about this water, is what they agree with it? I don't know, um, and then, yeah, what about this access? Road.
Zach?
What's the ask of this business item? What the staff want to come out or the committee want to come out?
So I, I asked at the last meeting, what goals to represent back to the discussion for having a Silo Township. And I wanted to know, I wanted to handle what we consider to be the pros for the cons that we're placing when our team was in front of Silo Township. I, I think that once, what this is involved in to is a document that I think we think we could share with Silo Township to kind of explain, hey, here's, here's kind of how we're thinking. But I think at some point, that committee needs to talk to the property owner. Because all of the things, David, that you suggested, you know, we might, might benefit from, or could benefit from. We can't do it unless property, like there was permission to, to do it and or somebody buys the property. And at the heart of this is, is the fact that. You know, he, he and his partner now initially had a request to reserve the whole thing. But they didn't, they decided didn't want to pay him what he feels the land is worth through the reservation process. So. Unless he changes his mind, he's not going to give up the property for that amount of money. And therefore the preserving of the well and anything else that might occur is, you know, the two of those values don't control that. So, you know, I, I think we could run numbers, probably should run numbers, definitely the basket thick, I would run some numbers on, you know, homes or whatever, but. Um, you know, a lot of these goals could be written. When I first read this, I thought, geez, like all here to say the term across that apparently proposed on the right fifth information, boy, they're like a plant or whatever. It sounds like we're finding a way not to state what might be a goal, might be a benefit to me when I first read it. Um, I realized that it's, it's a partially baked idea and it's one sheet of paper that's millimeter thick that conveys a concept. To really flush out whether the benefits are now, we should, we should talk to the property owner. Um, you know, the, the the road to the industrial park would need more than just talking to that property. We'd have to talk to Dexter Fast Energy Technology because we can't get to our roads without the process there, probably. So, you know, if those are true goals, then we should convey those goals like that. Um, you know, I still think it's a benefit to add people to our community. And now we can debate the number of, the number of, the number of homes. That that's a debatable topic for sure, that goes back to density and everything else that this community runs with on any other series of developments, you know, either for us or benefits for us. But I, I think that it's a benefit to add people. I also think it's a benefit to remove the uncertainty of that property. There are a lot of people that especially live in Dexter Crossing that wonder slash worry slash a concern though, what's going to go behind me? Or behind us? Yeah, I had that conversation with Congress members all day and I had it with other people. And, 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 you know, I, I don't think they worry about something small going behind it. And if they worry about something big. So to me, there's a huge benefit that's not listed in here. Of eliminating the uncertainty of that property. I don't know which goal falls under. It's probably not in the master plan. The well certainly could be a benefit if they died water. Um. But I mean, we're, we're trying to be good partners at this point and I think, I think this is a good start towards framing some of the goals that we need to think about for a little bit or. Uh. Maybe add on to it or build on to it a little bit because I, I think that there are some things that could be written from a different perspective. As instead of does not provide sufficient information. But I'm reading the negative end of that sometimes.
So let me, if I could, um. This body, the, the subcommittee has fulfilled as much as it can based on the direction it's been given. So is there potential? Absolutely. We have not been given the direction from council to forward in that direction or to have those conversations with Mr. Law. If, if based on what our goals are, um there's not enough information to fully evaluate. Does that mean it doesn't have potential? No. But if that is the, if that is the direction council wants to move to, that's the next step. We just, we need to know that so we can then take that, explain it to the township. But we really need to know what is council want as far as this annexation. How far do you want us to go with that?
Zach?
Yeah, so based on that guidance, to me, it reads like it's dead as it currently sits. The, the area that Silo Township wants to be developed is the most precious area of the property. It's wooded wetlands. That's extremely where they have wooded wetlands now. They want that because they want the road to look rural. They do not want to have road access.
Can you, you said that area that Silo Township wants to develop, what did you mean? What were you referring?
The area for annexation. The woodland area behind Dexter Crossing.
To be clear, that's the applicant, what's that?
So yes, the area that they're allowing to consider departmental or whatever.
Okay, thank you.
Is, is the, it's the most precious area. Um, it doesn't benefit the residents of Dexter Crossing. They have four hundred to five hundred extra vehicle trips, doesn't benefit our connectivity. Um. I know they pitched, we'll have trails that will connect, that's great if you learned in Dexter Crossing or the new area, people from Westridge aren't going to get in their car and drive over there and walk in trails that go off. Um. I, I don't see how it meets all our benefits. They, they're, they don't want to put a road in. They may not be saying that, they do not want to put a road to Baker. Um. I would say if the talk does continue, um residential development and the density that has been proposed is kind of a sugar rush. You get energy upfront, but long term you lose money, then there ought to be some conversation of let's also try to sort out annexation agreements for Dexter Chelsea Road in the future. Similar to what uh Ann Arbor and Pittsfield and Ann Arbor Township have. That's all.
What else had you answered on?
Yeah, um, so for me, and I think this, this is, I appreciate the work that I've done into this document. It did really show some of that, but in sitting in those meetings, there is a level of infusion for me, setting it that way is. So there is an application in front of us for the annexation. There is an application in front of Silo Land Preservation that is still is not close to my knowledge, has not been resolved.
Uh, it's supposed to go to their L P C on September twenty second.
September twenty second. So. Until that is closed with the decision, if it's still an open and we, we don't know what agreement they might come up with, love. Mr. London also talks about that either the three parts move together of annexation, many hands and the preservation of in the middle, which Silo really does not like. That was my impression out of the meeting, that just that portion that was preserved. They don't like it. Um, or at least the members that were there. Uh. There is nothing from many hands to Silo that suggests anything beyond the concept at this point. So I, I fully agree with those conversation. I think we went into with the points um you made, Mayor. We actually went, this council put the subcommittee together to go there with having some of that, that conversation. But to me, coming out of those meetings, I'm like, they still feel that they don't, Silo doesn't know what do they really want? They actually really appreciated Michelle providing some planning um perspective for them to look at something that they never looked before. Have conversations they never had about their priorities for just preservation across Silo and for that particular property itself. Um. I have not seen any document and I might be wrong or any indication that actually there could potentially be water there for well. It's, it's, it's one of those things that they're, they say, oh, it could potentially be, or the, the property owner says, but there is nothing that I have seen that said it could actually be. I, I do agree with um with sort of that it puts a, um, a benefit is sort of like ending, like there is a understanding of what happens beyond Dexter Crossing. But if we do that annexation and that the other two portions of it have not moved according to what they really think about or London has proposed. Then that's up, the end of that subdivision doesn't know what is happening in their backyard down the road. So I think for me is not that we shouldn't participate or look at this negatively. I think my feeling personally is that maybe we need to just pause a little and let Silo have some decisions on what they actually want to see with, with that property. It's there, there was the, there was a question honestly put to us in, in that, oh, if Dexter is interested in annexation, some members would, would just would support that, but to me was really putting that on us versus them having an honest construction between themselves and figuring out what they really would like to see happen as well and at least for me and I know for others as well, it is important to keep that, that good relationship between the two municipalities. So I I appreciate your, your comments because I think it really fits within this, this as well, the guideline of what, what do we do next? And I agree with Michelle that um maybe the subcommittee could benefit from additional direction from the council of what do we discuss or what, what would we want out of those, those meetings? Um.
I think that the subcommittee has the ability to include and find out if the common goal, you know, is the Silo Township having an special like we're having in our report? Have they, have they had open discussion about it? Maybe ask that, or maybe you could ask that at the next meeting.
I think they're gonna go to a board meeting, but I don't think they. They, they have a plan.
I was of the understanding, talking to a couple of the trustees prior to the formation of the committees, that both boards felt the benefit to come together and talk and to share what their common goals might be for the property. That doesn't mean you're absolute, have to fall in line with them, but might be for the property. And I think that we're doing a good job of putting those out there, which is good.
Yeah.
And I think there's others that could be written in a little bit that I've tried to describe, but that, that being said, it'd be great to see something from Silo that was similar to see if there's an overlap. I mean, maybe the concept that Mr. London proposed in a different forum is out there.
Yeah.
So I would encourage you in October or June to encourage Silo to have that conversation.
I appreciate that.
Well, and the reason, the reason, the reason I think we either need to get to that point or engage is that the volume put in our court. We have the annexation request in front of us. If we were to act on that, and I said we have to, if we were to act on that, the application in front of the L P C would be, zip would be booed because we would be acting before that action. Okay, so I just know that we have an open applicant or application here or a different call or request. At some point in time, we have to put that on the art board agenda for a decision and I don't know if we're there yet or I don't think I'm here for very yet. I'd like to give Silo a chance to tell us what they, they envision for the property. Maybe their vision for the property is better than Mr. Law's.
Their vision for the property is they want the full two hundred thirty seven acres as open space. They made that very clear, which are the means that we have.
That's been written down somewhere?
They have not, they don't, so we have to understand, they do not operate the same way we do. They operate in Silos. You have a township board, we have an L P C, you have a planning commission. They don't have professional staff like you have. And so uh they use Carla Wharton for the planning commission. But that doesn't mean they, they are communicating back and forth with one another. What you're, and I understand why you're asking that. But what we're asking them to do may be outside the realm of what they're comfortable to be able to produce. What they have told us has been verbal. Um, would they put it in writing? I, I presume you could ask that a little bit. I think what this board needs to do is give us direction. Do we want to go to Silo? Work toward the possible annexation, following the guidelines that you've got in your master plan board? We could use that if that's what we want us to do, we can do that.
Well, I have no problem, I'm, this is public information, so, you know, Kathy's online listening. I mean, I mean, you know, it's, it's, so I don't have a problem sharing all this, I just would like to understand. You know, when do we think we're going to be able to say something back to the person that's requesting the annexation? Because I don't plan to leave that application pending.
Uh, I get that.
That's the preservation committee's two hundred forty acre request.
So at the second meeting, both bodies came away with excuse me, the date. They don't see this annexation as helping us achieve our goals as it's currently presented.
And so we just need to understand what those goals are.
Their goals are preservation, ours are as I.
So they just have one goal then?
That is their primary goal, yes.
Okay.
The, with that, there is, they like the idea of connecting their pathway system to ours. They like the idea of working with the city. They, and I'll go out on a limb and Kathy and the rest can let me know by overspeed. There, they, there isn't a level of comfort of working through this with Mr. London.
Uh, what?
Um, okay, so I think we need to be careful here first of all about saying any of this because that was three members of their board. That wasn't their full board. We don't have anything back from them.
That's why I asked, yeah.
We know, and so what I would, I would like to, if, you know, if, if that's, if push comes to shove and that's what we need from them, and it sounds like that's what I'm hearing, we need from them, something in writing that is something similar to this. Um, that said, I think prior to that, we have to be very careful again about things, statements that we're making here because the thing that I took away from those meetings outside of a lot of what we've already talked about, is that it was a great opportunity and perhaps the first time, you know, long time or in anyone's memory, that the two municipalities had sat down together, positive relationship building. And so I just don't want to lose that in the middle of all of this. Um, so, you know, and I'm not trying to pick on anyone, but to sit here and say they don't want to put a road out to Baker, I mean, I was in those meetings and I didn't get the impression that it was like, no, we will not do this. I mean, we were having an open discussion, we were, we were having a reasonable discussion and I want to make sure that we are able to maintain that with this project and any other project that may come forward.
Yeah, I think the summary of all is good one towards that. It just would, it'd be helpful to get some of that from them so we can, you know, understand where each, each community is at in this process. Smith put back from them so we can, you know, understand where each each community is at in this process.
Yeah, um, so. Out of the last meeting, um our last. We were Kio asked about goals and um. It kind of was good and did what I thought were potential benefits or things that were potentially a benefit. Um, a lot of it goes to exactly the things that council member Michelle said, um. It's almost like every single aspect of this project. You can look at it as a positive or negative. Like you could say, there's forty five acres with eighty homes for proposed. Say that's relatively low development, that's a Dexter Cross, won't add a lot to the, you know, or significantly change neighborhood. You could also say that that's only two homes per acre and there should be more density than that if it's land that's with the city. Um, you know, you could say it's gonna close off that in the Dexter Cross. Assuming that there isn't some other stubs that is gonna eventually go out to a different location. Um, there there's. There's a lot of um. The proposal, like you said, Mayor Keo. Is one sheet, right, there's, I should say, it's it's a couple of sheets and there is a sketch, but. The applicant has said he's not gonna develop a property, so you know. We're going on very little information. And. I think. Like Health Member Elvex said, we don't know what's gonna happen with the other two parts, so. I I don't necessarily believe the idea that all three parts does have to happen together. Um, I think that the annexation could happen without the other two and I think everybody can pretty much see how that could happen. Regardless of what happens with the other two portions of this proposal. So. There's, there's a lot of potential option, you know, things like um, you know. The road, the access, if if there was access to the annex portion, then. You know, then you would potentially have cut through traffic. Some people would say that would give Dexter crossing the way to the railway instead of having to go out to Dexterian Harbor and make their way back to get to I ninety four. Um, there's just all these things. It would help to have more things, more comments, like someone tonight that says. Like more density, like the density like it is, we want more open spaces. We don't want the portion that's being developed, we prefer it got preserved there, um, you know, um. The homes that are there, that it wouldn't be large lots and large homes, that it would be smaller lots and smaller. Um, the trails, the proposal for the trails. Uh, you know, I know the residents of your environment can complain that they can't get easily to the border work track, the railroads. And I know that the residents of West Ridge are saying it's great. I assume that if there was some connectivity for Dexter Crossing, that that would be a good thing, but. There's nothing in any of the plans that suggests that there's any trails or where they would go. And. Again, the council member Michelle's comment about the preservation of the land. You know, part of the discussion that we had was the land that's being proposed to stay preserved. It sort of snakes around the entire property, you know, it's there's there's a cross fatal road. There's a small piece that comes in that's actually over a gas line, it's been. Kind of opens up a little bit, then it turns south and then it has a flag in the bottom. Um, where it kind of finishes out and. Part of SIO conscious concern is. If we're gonna preserve this land, how are people gonna access? Cause typically for land preservation, the complaint that they give back to the community is you preserve this land, we'd like to be able to access it. Well, they need a park out there, they won't, they can't put a park out there because there's no space to access it. So there's. In this proposal, there's something for everybody to select is when it comes down to this. There's plenty for everybody. And so we gotta figure out, if this is gonna happen in some way, shape or form, we gotta figure out what it is that SIO is gonna say, we like this. We say we like this to the developer or the applicant says, we like this. Cause right now, the problem is we're just not there and. I I don't know how we're gonna get there in our meetings, but I mean, we are gonna have to have this conversation. I I don't think as it's proposed, it's gonna look more. I I just, I can't see it, at the very least, not.
Yeah, if that's the perception that our committee has and they're going back to us. If that's the perception that SIO was going back to them, then we should just try and tell the applicant that.
I think it could help to have some discussion.
But you need to be able to give feedback on on, you know.
Yeah.
What is we don't like or what is they don't like or whatever, the combination is, you know. Sorry.
Well, so to to kind of go on that, um, you know, but. Kind of walk over the, you know, SIO's want it or um if. My my thought is that maybe for for next meeting, we come back with um. You know, maybe these these goals and then um. A list of protons, here's the things to look at, um, based on the conversation we've had today. Or helpful to vote to give formal direct correct. Um, direction to the committee. And kind of we go through it on the last one and say, you know, we like we like these things from the list, we don't we don't like those things from the list and. Um, committee to take this and and show back to Diana.
That and off or whatever, if I didn't put to the committee.
So I do have some additional things that I can share with you, um. If we if we. If the goals weren't written or responses to be negative, but rather to show there's potential. Instead another way, um. The requested annexation of the forty five acres into the city in combination with the proposed open space. And the agrarian development envisioned by many hands, which would be located in SIO, has the potential to. Provide additional housing options and tax revenue, that would be for the city. Um, provide a location for additional municipal wealth, that's a city. Um, provide Baker Road access forward to the Dexter Business and Research Park, that's another city. Um, uh, potential. Limited density, that could be a potential for the township, they're not looking for high density development. Um, preserve open space and maintain the rural character, that's a township.
Here's not reading from something you're suggesting that's something good to write or any?
No, I'm reading from something that I.
Where am I missing that?
It's not in here, it's in the notes.
Oh, that's what I did, you read it.
I'm interested.
Okay, yeah.
And then the last one is to facilitate connection of existing pathway systems, that's a city, county. And township potential, so. What I'm asking you for on behalf of the committee is. If you were to agree that those are potentials. Would the, would would council want us to continue the discussion with the township? To continue working toward.
Yes, I I think that the committee should continue to meet, I I I just think we need to, you know, write some direction. On the message.
And and I I think we should put that down on on.
On paper.
Papers and and that council.
At least please, please they can understand what we're thinking as a group that way.
What it doesn't clear up for is the question that they've asked us from the get go, which is um, does the city support the annexation?
Well, we haven't decided that yet, but but I mean, what we've indicated in our master plan is that we'd like to do that in harmony with the start of the township.
That would be a set, so you get.
But in order to know, I mean, unless they're formally saying they don't agree and don't ever want to do it. I mean. That was the point of meeting was to see if there's kind of ground, right? Zach, here's your hand, that's your way.
Um, a couple of very technical questions, have the joint committees discussed non-contiguous planning unit developments?
Um.
What did you call it?
Non-contiguous planning unit development. Okay, um, has the joint committees.
Uh, Zach, you'll have to help me, non-contiguous, PUD.
Yeah, the the zoning enabling legislation legislation that the state allows. A PUD to be properly over here, properly over there, in fact, you have to say. In your zoning ordinance, if they have to be contiguous. So what I'm getting towards is there's the opportunity to develop planning developments in that area that would include other areas that would be preserved in perpetuity. That could be part of that large site beyond the other side of the township. Um, and the reason why I bring that up is their land preservation ordinance, when they purchase land rights, it only goes for fifty years. So it's not like it's gonna be preserved forever and ever, it's gonna be preserved for fifty years, helping hands if it's still there. Is gonna be sitting on significantly increased uh property that the township won't be able to afford, the vital development rights at that time. So even if they they purchase it, it's gonna turn in fifty years, I will I would guarantee, I'll be the Zach guarantee on that. Um, so the the non-contiguous PUD allows for controls and the benefit to the township is that you can preserve property without having to spend a dime. Because it's part of the approval process that gets locked in, the only way you can undo it is to change the PUD. Um, has.
So what you're proposing is a a tool for.
Open that the children that.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, the other thing, um, I. Has there been any discussion of joint planning commission?
That got glossed over very. Very, uh, there was one comment about it, it is in. If I'm not mistaken, there's there's something in their master plan um being open to that. Um, I'm I may be confusing, um, um, thinking back to when they did their master plan out there. And Doug uh just verbally indicating that they were interested in working with the city through.
Okay, so that, that going into that and probably would just be a stand up for approval, that project would allow them to have planning commission numbers. It allows us all to have joint say on on land entitlement for the entire site. Um, so that might be something um for education in terms. And I do wanna describe my my comment that they don't wanna have a road out to Baker, sometimes they did say things to be blocked, they have not said that. But there has been documentation, I forget if it was in M Live or in the minutes where I read it, that there is a desire to have a northwest. Preservation strip parallel to our Baker, the reason for that is that you can block the road going across it. It it may not have been said that that's that's the tool of.
And that going where that came, I can only tell you that one of your biggest concerns. In the way the open space is, and the word they used for germinator, um, was that. It would, they wouldn't be able to get access off Baker to the most. Uh, potentially quality portion of the open space, um, based on the way it's. Currently laid out, um, so I did not from that get the impression that they were anti road off Baker. Um, they are, they did seem, the committee that was there, very concerned when. How do we provide access for people, cause not everybody's gonna walk or fly.
Or roads not a drive.
Okay, so I think we've made some good progress on that and I appreciate the committee's work, Michelle, I can put this on paper. I'm sure, gotta bring it back. Yeah, that is, I don't have to, I did before the reason I told her. But you have a little agenda, maybe you can, there's a little agenda there. People have.
Are supposed to meet on the twenty second.
Oh, I know that, yeah, I know that you did.
Um, that. Is it possible we could do the workshop before the next week?
Yeah, we can do that, we can try to do that. That could stretch, not. Lasting, thank you. Okay, thanks everyone, let's move on to um five discussion of the, this is a discussion, I mean, not consideration as it says. Back at home, right? Yeah, here it's all experienced.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, so the discussion of residential shipping volume.
Yeah, so, um. As you're all, as you're all aware, um, the city and and the Toronto Bullet Works um provide uh residential brush to bank. Um, for the for um, limbs, more trees, um, general brush. And the question has come up. We we've had some questions from residents of the main condos about whether or not. Um, they were eligible for the shipping service. And at the break now, um, because they're paying to the um. Uh, grow rubber collection fund, um, they 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 were eligible and provided that service. Um, but it kind of opened up a, had a fair question of, um. You know, each individual homeowner, uh, pays into the the chipping. Or pays into the rough collection fund for the shipping service, um, through their um biobank utility cell. But what that doesn't necessarily cover is homeowners association common areas. Um, which, you know, for example, for West Ridge, uh, Dexter Crofting, you know, there there are some some areas that. Are, you know, homeowners association common areas that, you know, are on one person's specific property, and so those areas are. Covered under the 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 um rough rubbish fund. Um, when it comes to multifamily uh condominium developments, um, you know, for example cottonwood. Um, as soon as you step out, you put the door of that condominium, you're in homeowners association common area. So the, that's the kind of what what kicked this off. Um, and up until now, we we've had an administrative direction, um, on how we handle. Um, shipping service, um, but. Kind of all this came together, um, that that caught me to want to, um, develop kind of a more formal policy. Um, from the board council, um, to address the service kind of more comprehensively. Um, and so, uh, we put together a graph, um, of policy, included in your packet. Um, along with some examples, um, from other communities and and their policies. And I wanted to to get a little speed back on on the graph and, uh, the whole put together.
So, but there's somebody from Capital and Condos, if you've got one right now. Walks outside to go to their mailbox. And they notice it downwind. Were they allowed to put it out at the road? To pick up?
As a break, I guess.
And they are, it's a pain, right? Okay, but you're you're suddenly proposing here that they wouldn't pay, is that true? Um. That. What do they do for leave pickup?
I believe it's the the same thing.
We don't go into Ghana for a leave there. They bring some of it, I know sometimes they brought stuff uphill like right around that little area of their towards the top, as far as holding side. The investment helps when I talk to programs.
It it just seems to me that. That that, I mean, I get the contractor part of this. But if they create their own pile, not wanting to pay a contractor. And and they're okay paying their own street, why wouldn't we just block it?
So, so the.
And I realized that the last example wasn't extreme. But it's not really been a problem ever.
It 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 hasn't been until events. When they put out a significant amount all at once. And they they, and and the the administrative policy has that we we don't clean up after contractors.
But they know that, they know that now.
They know now, yeah, is it so hard, was it mentioned?
Yeah, I know, I have to go up there and see if it was.
But if the goal is to have that change, where we do pick up after contractors or. Individual residential service. That's fine.
No, I I I'm saying that I think most of the time they hire a contractor, it goes away and we don't have to worry about it. But I'm saying that I think there's pages where the file is generated. But I'm saying that I think there's pages where the file is generated. The neighbors just cleaning up the area, giving it a little nice, whatever. Innocently, and I think we picked up those sticks and not worried at all about it ever.
On smaller models, yeah. And being cursed for my own service, so and it's, and I think it's it's, as he put it, when I was talking about it was. Um, like first, for instance, walkabout, that started out with one or two here and there. Now it's literally contractors are bringing stuff to the road and and expecting us to take care of it. Yeah, I don't think they're, I don't think they're ever that.
And 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 what what if it doesn't pay anything, you know?
That, so that, what Tim just said, that's obviously a problem. Um, in my mind. But I don't think that's what's happening in cottonwood at all. And I'm wondering, you know, because I'm I'm cognizant of, you know, the DPW's time and. Ability to do as much as it already does. But if they have been paying into it, they are already sort of under this expectation. It just seems, I don't know, it seems like. We have been doing it and we take it away. And then we don't charge them for it. I'm not sure that that's. Going to be very popular. Um, I offer this suggestion. Is there a reason why they can't have one spot that they put everything?
You're talking about the cottonwood?
Yeah. Like at the end, at the entrance of cottonwood, to make it easier on you guys. And if they don't put it there, then it doesn't even pick up.
Well, and that's what they did best.
Right.
And they just, they had this huge pile, but it was a, so the contractor came over, it wasn't them, it was the contractor that did it. And their normal contractor, they have to do it, it does take it away, but they had another contractor to do it. So now here we are, we have this huge pile that uh I don't know, they've taken away in. I will say from my experience, every, you know, you're talking to other communities. That's just how it was. I mean, the contractors just put the stuff out, they they didn't put out, they just, they took care of it and that's how it was.
Right.
Um.
No, I know every time I had to rework done, the contractor takes it, I would never put that on my curb. Also, the. The idea of like that it's not a problem until it is, I mean. My whole lot could do that tomorrow, we could create the same problem. I just don't, I don't feel. I feel like we're singling out. A section of residents with it in a way, and I I'm not very comfortable with it. And the other thing, and this is the last thing I'll say, that big pile that you guys did pick up, my understanding was that was. A lot of that was from after a storm. Is that your understanding well? I mean, it's been there for a while.
She said, she said it was from the winter storm.
Right, and so when I look at this, I know that's not a natural disaster, so where's the line? I mean, could it be? More than a natural disaster? I mean, what is a natural disaster in the context?
So. It was, what it was, is they they thought that our everybody's were going to kick back for some reason, which I've never seen. In my experience, I've never seen our buttons like that. So they waited, you know, we did pick up lots of limbs and brush to happen. So they waited until, you know, till months later, and that's how this came about with this huge pile. It came back by the cutter and all.
So if some of it is just a communication issue with. I mean, I'm not saying it's on your, it's just a general communication issue between the contractor, the HOA. The individual residents, whoever.
It's, you know, it's it's like we said before too, is even though we just hired two new people. So now we have to train them and do all the stuff. I mean, it's short staff as it was. I still feel the shortage, even though we have, you know, for a community that's developed in size over the last twenty five years. You know, we have, we've had one person, so it's difficult as it is, so it's putting limitations. I I don't have problems with putting limitations on certain aspects. That's me.
Yeah, um, we've had this policy. For over thirty years. This is, this is how we handle brush. Um, anytime a contractor comes in, that makes a huge mess, that's, you know, that's their responsibility. Um, I think it's been pretty good. Obviously, we do have a problem. Um. We've always picked up. Whatever the homeowners put out there, and sometimes that can be, that that can be quite large. So I really don't see the problem with the policy. Um, other than we need to communicate it better.
Current one, maybe?
Yeah, the current one we have. I mean, maybe we need to put a size limit on it, you know what I mean? So when we do have. At the ice like they did down at that uh cottonwood condos, and then they decided that they were going to take that all out. Maybe they, you know, do an eight by ten pile or whatever we consider, but this policy is pretty pretty good for a long, long time. We just ran into a a little bit of a snag here. I think anyway, and if I had a huge tree removed and I never thought for one minute sticking it out in the alley around Forest Street. I mean, that contractor came in there, I mean, it was a ton, it was a huge binder, um, and I paid my contractor to take that away.
Thank you. So. My understanding is that in this situation. That they had their, the lawn, the lawn maintenance and mowing service come, and because there was all this debris and from the storm. In order for the lawn maintenance to happen, they needed to clear that. So even in their case, it's not like. I mean, those people aren't equipped to haul away brush. I mean, that's not typically part. People show up with their mower, they've got their mower and their blower. They don't have their trucks to haul away brush. I don't think that's what they're expecting to do. So it seems to me this is kind of an out. Outlier situation. Uh, and I agree, we don't already have something in our policy that's limiting to the size or amount. I think. You know, I saw something come through that maybe Cityman Arbor is limiting how many compost bags you can put out, maybe like they're limited to ten now or something like that. And some people said, oh, some bags, and then it was, well, this is so that we can better manage our time, know how long we're going to be out on the route. That sort of thing. I mean, I've had it where I put out my compost bin and we've got four mature trees in our backyard. Three oaks and a hickory, and it looks like it's going to be another mass year because they are dropping nuts like crazy and those nuts are heavy. And I made a mistake one time of filling my compost bin. I don't know, I'm pretty strong and it was heavy and I. Called it, you know, and I think one time waste management emptied it and then the next time they left me a note and said, this is too heavy, don't do that to us. And I respect that and I said, okay, I can move this, but they can't or they don't want to, they need to take care of their employees. Um, so I don't think it's out of the question then either for DPW, if there is a pile that is over some limit to leave a note. And I think residents will be respectful of that. Um, so again, all to say, I am inclined unless there's some other reason to. Stay with our existing policy, but if we need to add um something else, but also I, what I hear though is. We maybe don't have enough staff to provide the services that we're accustomed to. See that, and when it comes to budget time or whatever time, I. You know, while I can talk about morality issues, I mean, that didn't go unheard by me. Um. I, I want to make sure that stat has the resources they need to provide the services that we want to provide and that residents have come to expect. And so I, anytime, anytime that feels like they don't have that, I want you to bring that to us and I want us to talk about that. So. If at any time you need to have a different conversation about what we need to do, because even there is where they need, I will.
And and I mean, that's that's been my, um, you know, when I, when I. Set in the city manager, you know, I I I booked with Dan and I booked with her and recognized that. The DPW is one of the departments that might need additional resources and and staffing. Um, but um my my goal has been to correct, not to say. Here's additional for people and. For whatever reason, it comes on as a state. Um, my my goal has been to say, here's here's the DPW. How does that look? How does that work? Do we build even more? And then work work our way back to that. Put ourselves in a position where, you know, that's only one point.
Yeah, um, I sit on a condominium board, um, or land speaking contracts. I, three years is a long contract, usually it's more like two years. Um. If they're commercial, I don't think we should go there. If we're considering them residential, I think we should, charging the rubbish fee and if they have an empty way that covers condominiums. And just tell them, we're not charging the rubbish fees or the the. Waste fee or whatever it is for the pick up branches, and you have to do this because they have a dense eating contractor. So, I mean, just let them know, yeah, I mean, Walkabout Creek, you tell them, you got a contractor, you know, you take care of it. Which everyone on the condos figure out which ones it is and say, you're doing it and don't charge it for the for the solid case and just tell them, you're going to have to do the bigger. And if that is, I don't know how that breaks down, beans and Christmas trees and branches and whatnot, but. I mean, it's going to have to be either or, and you gotta let DPW know so they can say, yes, we go there, no, we don't, but. I mean, once you tell them, they have a contractor, it's in the contract, you gotta take it off site. So you either have to be prepared for it or they won't be able to fit the counter.
Well, and 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 coming into this meeting, that was my thought, uh. That's where we draw the line of, is this the space that the HOA. Should be responsible for versus some of that, DPW should be responsible for.
And the gray areas are all the tough, right? I mean, Walkabout Creek, I think everybody would say, yeah, it's probably commercial. Even though there's going to be some that are going to fall into that gray area, but I mean, divide it up or or save them. You can do this, but you know. This is going to be the guidance if you want to keep on paying for it, so you got me.
Well, look at that, that's not, well, make sure we understand that, they understand that when they ask somebody to cut limbs down. They're paying them to haul away. They they admit that they do that every couple, three years. This happened to be, because they got back to the storm then. And their grass company person was giving this garden, it's been a little more than one, the city's in gray. And they said, okay, can you just put them over there? But they don't have the ability to haul it off to a different contractor. So, I mean, I know what you're saying, the next bid, you make sure they can haul away, but but then forever, they haven't had the issue. With the amount of limbs has been minimal. And they've been paying into the service, which frankly, makes the cost for everybody else less than it is. Okay, because there's no less cost. So I, I don't see, I see it as a one-time miss. That's been blown out of proportion. Because of one time, then. And then we end up with a different policy, right? It's the policy modified. Uh, I don't know, it just seems like a react, overreacted in one thing. Personally, that's how I see it.
It may be a function of the trees on the site that are getting older, could have some problems, they're dropping their branches. Again, though, those trees, HOA is responsible. All of it's say to a responsible, and that's why people move into a condo, so they don't have to worry about that.
Right, but every community analyzes, does their stuff differently. They manage theirs, they hire the ones they want to. Some may want to hire, you know, have brush pickup every week. They have their own fees, their own system, right? And for however long it hasn't been a problem until one time this spring.
That. Yes, I I think this is perfectly reasonable. I was prepared to move to copy with a couple of minor changes. Um. I like that the people who are paying for the service get to use it. Um, I guess I'll start to that we don't have to chip or collect leaves. There are a lot of communities that do not. We do, you're on your own. Um, so it's an extra thing that we're doing. Um, I think it's per perfectly reasonable that it's for single family houses and then it's based on the volume, the volume is. How it impacts the time to chip. I've worked the back of the chipper, doesn't matter if a contractor cut down a tree or Johnny Homer. It's the size of the thing and how they stick it, they put it like pick up sticks, they put it nice with the thick end towards you. Um, so I think this is perfectly reasonable. Um. My concern with the distinction of whether the homeowner did it or the contractor did it is, I have uh. And a neighbor who just turned eighty, he's around her stride, but he could hire someone just to cut down tree branches. And put it in the curb, just a guy with a chainsaw. The current policy would say, yeah, hire somebody to do that, we're not touching it. Whereas I could cut down the giant black maple in my backyard myself. I've done it before, not not ours, but I've cut down a large trees and I can drag it up to the thing and the policy would be. They're coming to chop that thing down or they're coming to chip it out, and that doesn't seem like a right balance of the impact of what's happening. But I think it's really good. Um, again, I'm happy with it, just a couple of minor changes. I would also note though that the seasonal holiday trees. With the quick pickup in the second week of January. If folks celebrate Orthodox Christmas, that might give them only a day after before they have to get it out. I don't know how many Orthodox people we have, but.
So there's there's got to be a future consideration on that one. I'd like you to write down the current policy and then show the changes that you and General Ralph have modified in here. So when it's clear, we'll stick that.
Well, and I think I'd like to give the current policy within the resident handbook. I don't know if we have something in a formal way, but. Policy style or that.
Yeah, but the 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 difference is, the difference is like, so you're that the Walkabout Creek is not banned. Right. But Cottonwood condos is banned.
Right.
Right, how about Eden Court?
That's what you said.
Our fan, how about here on Drew Court? Is banned.
Yeah, this, like I told you, before we talked about this, I didn't know what these certain condominiums was like squirting and.
Well, that that's part of the story that's unfolded here is that. There's a proposed change to who would pay and who wouldn't, and who hasn't been made. It's similar, I don't think that whole story has been. Fair to that. That's why I said the current policy. You may, you may know you're not going to pick something up Walkabout Creek because they are paying. Now, who made the decision for that? I don't know. I mean, we don't see that. We don't see our own residential goals, but. We gotta figure out what, what we need by that. I don't want to make that sense, but.
Yeah, I agree, it would be helpful to understand those different properties, because I'm thinking in the immediate proximity to us is Victoria Condos. Their road labeled private drive, and so I'm thinking about residential streeting type of. And I know sometimes they've seen them out, um, rather than. That all along, uh, I think. And so one other place where I think it would make sense to be consistent is if the city is servicing the the street trees along specific road. That part of residential street tree trimming policy, then I think that should, that should be consistent with whether or not they're like tipping in that. Like if in Victoria Condos, if we never go down their private road and you don't do that residential street tree trimming and we don't do anything there. Then that's something else. So I don't know, I guess it would help for me to have an understanding of what does it look like for each of those like P U Vs or whatever they are. And we're saying, we have them paying, we have them paying, um. I would even see that, I guess that's what I understood. And I think he's back to point to about, I guess the only difference is, I feel like. The. The volume generated by residents containing their own tree is, is just going to be normalized, I think, by a contractor who can do it. So you don't want to.
Problem, Kurt, to be also, I've said many times, they had this, like in Walkabout, in other areas, you know, there's there's limbs out. I mean, they pick them up, they don't want the city to look bad, so they do do that. I mean, that's, it is, it's just when it comes to a policy like we were talking about, this specifically, this one.
But they're not driving through Walkabout.
No, not by any means, no, they're they're more digging right, right?
Okay, thanks for bringing that in front of us. We'll come back with some more information, I think, at the future meeting. Uh, we're back around an on-range participation. Anyone here in the audience who would like to speak today? The man's online, Josh? Okay, we are down to council consensus. Um, starting with New York, if you want.
All right, does everyone know the story of Ben Hamill's rider requiring all brown evidence be pulled from the M and N joint? The reason they did it wasn't because they hated brown women's, just because they had a really complex stage set up with lights and all these things. And their rationale was if they couldn't figure out to read the thing that's remove brown M and Ms.
They didn't assemble the lights right and we're gonna die. So that was a very clear test. The reason why I voted against the consent agenda is all three of the bids had the wrong address. That means if they send it there, we may not get it in time to pay it. And we could be subject to fees. One of them had still as a village of Dexter, um, so I I. I couldn't vote for people who can't get those basic details back. Um. I was very uncomfortable voting for the Eagle uh, permits, not because I didn't like what they're trying to do, but because. I didn't get to see all the materials that were presented. Um, and that's just a personal thing. I actually read every page of my mortgage as I was signing it. They hated me as the title company, but. It's very uncomfortable just hearing, yeah. Trust us, it's good. Um. And I wouldn't offer if we were. Redevelopment-ready community, engaged community. That's an offer to say, but if we are one of those, the MEDC would actively market redevelopment sites. Uh, in our community, including thirty, forty-five, Broad or any other sites that we have. That is all. Thank you, Jimmy.
Yeah, I just have a couple of comments. Um. Earlier, a resident emphasized the fact that we are a representative democracy, um. Yes, we are a constitutional republic. I just wanna emphasize that that form of government. Does permit citizen participation via petitioning of laws of government. I'm in full support of that, whether or not I support uh, the specific content of any said differently, so. Um, I just wanna communicate to the public that I appreciate their input, uh, whatever form that they. Uh, the second point I wanna make is. I think at our next meeting, we might be considering the milk feet flats to the maybe. Um, if not next meeting, maybe one after that, or it's on the upcoming. Uh. List, and so I made some comments that the one of the recent planning commission meetings were just, uh. Only ordinance talking about requirements for, and these are just wanted to draw everybody with everything to them. Here, so that anyone that comes before them, packet, I'm asking you to, um. Just keep a specific provision in mind as part of the section nineteen oh one where it says. The applicant shall demonstrate to the planning commission. And city council that the P U V provides at least three of the following site design elements that could not be obtained through product design and conventional dummy. And then it goes back to list what those are. So. This is talking about the recognizable material benefits, so when you are considering that, I'm asking you to. Again, come to a determination as to whether or not the site design elements that are proposed as a public benefit. Actually could not be obtained via conventional dummy, and if that's the case to me, um. Then a project would not be the requirement for P U V. And the last comment is, uh, just more like the setting in the room. I maybe the comment's been made a couple of times. We do have this screen here, which I can see it just fine. But I know members of the audience can, and so if we have a presentation by Eagle or something like that, I don't know if we've looked into or considered an option where. We have a second monitor, there, and down, something back there to the side, just so that members of the audience can also engage with the content that we're seeing. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. So. Yeah, it's okay. Julie?
Oh boy, um, I just think you guys are doing a really great job of adding a lot of diverse thoughts. I notice sometimes you guys will agree, they like bounce off each other's thoughts a little bit, but add something different, and I do love to hear that. Um, but I don't know, if you're getting the boss or anything, right, you have to wait, I could, so. I'm gonna leave it.
Owen?
Uh, yeah, to be sure, um, I was reading through the the survey here, which, um, the money. Um, and I think for a lot of my current college applications, a lot of the essays that we write are. Thinking about a local community and and thinking about its future and stuff, and a lot of the stuff that I I've spent my summer weeks thinking about is like really similar to the content of. Or whatever this is, so I don't know if that means that they did really good job with it, or I could be a really good soul, um, but I'm excited for the results of it. Um, and secondly, the next, the next meeting that we've scheduled is on the eleventh. Um, that's my eighteenth birthday, so I I hope council will be forgiving if I if I can't make it, um, I'm not sure. I might still, I might not have obligations, um, but I don't know, I'm not not requiring a president to make like, so maybe it's.
Problem.
Nice, fine.
Um.
What'd you call that?
Um, I definitely found like the SIO, uh, talking to the SIO, um, annexation conversation very interesting and hearing about like. Obviously, championships and other places, so really like the water. Uh, that would take. But it's really. I appreciate the, um, effort you put into not having such a.
Very good.
Um, I would like to make a request. I think it's within my. Ability to ask for it. Um. Nowhere in our council rules, well, I should turn off, we have a policy, and that policy. That's been enacted is on our agenda, so we designate items as discussion or consideration. However, we do not have that anywhere in our rules, so where is this? In our rules, it does say, if it's not listed, then we follow Robert's rules. Robert's rules, it doesn't have any provision for discussion items. It actually says you have to have a motion before you discuss the meeting. I know, in a second, because if you can't get two people to say, I wanna talk about this, then there's no such talking. So, being that, it's not the council rules and it's not Robert's rules. I request that going forward, you do not any longer designate items as consideration for discussion. They all are just, or they all are consideration. That's all.
There, wow.
Okay, um, first of all, Owen, I mean, give him a pass. You remember when it was my fortieth birthday and I was like, I'm not coming to that work session if we schedule it on that day, you're good.
I would've taken that too.
Yeah, well. Um, uh, so random thing, I was in Alaska last week and I was driving around and they had the speed things. The, what are those called? The detector things, I should know that. I was, I'm still at a different time zone. Yes, the radar signs, and they had this one that was like insanely surprisingly effective. It had a smiley face if you were going the correct speed and a freaky face if you were speeding. So I don't know if, you know, the next time we buy one of those, maybe we could, think about that. Um, because I could still be frown at, okay, so anyway.
A little, a little picture of Tim with a thumbs up.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, that'd be fine. Um.
Yeah, I'm gonna treat him for a minute.
No, that would be awful if I drove by. Sorry. Um, okay, last thing, I just wanna, uh, last meeting, I moved very quickly to both of our final items at this, at that point listed as a discussion item. Um, and the reason I did that is because. That's a long meeting. This one's thankfully not as long. I mean, at a point, I can't think straight anymore, and so. I just, I thought that was an important item and I wanted us to have the. The opportunity to discuss it with a clear head and not be completely fried at like, what was it, ten forty-five P M? So I just wanted to put that out there.
Okay, thank you for those. Does anybody have any proposals to go ahead and review your meetings?
Actually, sorry, let's keep talking. Um, I had a couple of residents talk to me, business owners and residents on the Big Blue corridor. Um, that have, um, that have been having problems with. Truck noise, um, specifically at at night, well, I think all the time, but also overnight, and I know that the city of Chelsea just, um. Is about to put into effect a, a ordinance for engine contact pressure brakes, and that's something I would like to talk about.
Okay. But, uh, next agenda then? Okay. Somebody asked me. Okay, we do have a closed session on our agenda. Everybody. Some move, move by Howard. A second please. Basically. I'll play here. Dan, all the voters are gonna have to pay this by taking high this.
Aye, aye.
Those votes. Okay.